Good evening. It is 6:02 PM and I'm calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. Tonight is Monday, September 13th, and we are meeting in the Nashua North Boardroom. The last couple -- well, that's not true. This summer, I was reading rules for decorum at public meetings at the beginning of every meeting. And last meeting, I didn't do that because I thought that we had established decorum. So I'm going to go back to it. I brought my list from this summer. So, ground rules for this evening and all subsequent meetings in case people forget. Please don't block the aisles or the exits. That's a fire code. We want to make sure that people can get out in case of an emergency. Please stay on the public side of the horseshoe. Please refrain from outbursts in the audience. We welcome public comments. We have two public comment periods available on the agenda. The sign up is over there. We ask that you sign up to speak. Wait your turn and don't call out individuals. Allow others to speak and do not interfere with them leaving when they're done speaking. If you disrupt my meeting, you will be asked to leave. If you continue to disrupt the meeting, I can ask that you be escorted out. I would prefer that we not do that. I would prefer that people be respectful. Everyone will get a chance to speak during public comments if you have signed up at the appropriate time. And regarding members' comments, we have a policy regarding members' comments. And I'm going to ask that we don't speak out about individuals, public or employees of the district. This is not an opportunity to respond to public comments. It's a chance to speak to events and interests in the district. So I welcome everyone to have their chance but also be appropriate for this meeting for the board to get the business of the district done. Okay, having said all that, Ms. Bishop, can you call the roll please? Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Thodden.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Ms. Zima's not here. Ms. Timmons.
Here.
We also have Dr. Sarfdi, Mr. Parker, Dr. McKinney, and Bobby Bagley. And our student rep Spencer. Done. When you're ready, if you could please read the prayer, Ms. Bishop. And then if you're up to it, Ms. Gilio, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam President, before we continue on, can we have a moment of silence for 9/11 victims? As a veteran and a Gulf War veteran, I think it's appropriate that we observe that --
Yes, the anniversary was --
Anniversary of 9/11.
This weekend.
It's very disheartening to me that we lost so many people when our country was so together at that time that we're now divided, unfortunately. But yes, we need to do that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. This is especially poignant since the TSA agents here in Nashua handled some of those calls, so. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, this evening, we have two presentations. And the first is Ms. Bagley from Public Health has agreed to come back again and give us the latest COVID data. Ms. Bagley?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me to give you an update on the numbers that we have. What I did do was I did put them on a slide because I know that rattling off numbers sometimes, you know, can be a little bit confusing. So I just put the information on slides and I'll just go through what we have right now currently for an update. So globally, as you can see, the total number of cases right now is over 224 million. The deaths are up at 4.6 million. And in the United States, we currently still lead the world in cases with 40.9 million. We're followed by India and Brazil. We have had a total of 659,000 deaths in the United States. New Hampshire, we are at substantial transmission for the entire state. We have 3,144 active cases right now, and we have seen a continual increase in the number of cases over the past few months. Most of the country is starting to see a leveling off, so we are expecting -- our epidemiologists reported out last week. We're hoping that New Hampshire will also get to that place where we start to see a little bit of leveling off. And some of that, of course, is related to the increase in vaccination rates across the country. Our total number of cases, now, this data is from Friday. They have not updated the data since the weekend. So the global and the data for the United States comes from John Hopkins' website, so those numbers are up to date today. New Hampshire's data, this is from September 10th, so this is Friday. They typically give us this information updated by 5 o'clock. I did try to wait, but this is the data from Friday. So these numbers probably will be increased by, you know, a certain number sometime when they give the updated data by tomorrow. So we have a total number of cases so far, 111,111. So, and our test positivity rate for the state right now is at 6.3%. There are currently 149 individuals hospitalized, so that's seven more from last week. And our total deaths right now are at 1,441, which has also increased by about six as well. Looking at Nashua, which is, you know, important for us here and the significance now for this meeting, we are at substantial transmission. We have a current number as of, again, Friday of active cases of 148. Our total cases in Nashua is 8,763. We have two metrics that we look at for that substantial criteria, which is the new infections. And so per 100,000, we are at 259.9. And our test positivity rate is 5.5. So if that, once that number goes over 100, they consider that substantial. And once the test positivity rate is over 5, we consider that substantial as well. And again, these data have been shown in this way for the past couple of months for us. And we have a total of 96 deaths for the city of Nashua. Vaccine data update. So in New Hampshire, we are slowly increasing our percentage of individuals that are fully vaccinated. So this is up about 4%, so 55.5. And we are up to 60.8% of individuals that have had at least one dose. And fully vaccinated for those between the age of 12 and 19, that went up by .1, 36.7%. And in Nashua, you can see, again, we've had a little bit of an increase by one percentage, 51.4% are currently fully vaccinated. And at least 56.5% have received at least one dose. And our vaccination rate for 12 to 19 is up to 40.3%. And this is all important because, again, if we want to see that leveling out, we're going to see that occur as more people get vaccinated to reduce the spread of infection. I did take the opportunity to check out the school-specific case data. Now, this is data that's presented for onsite cases only. So this would be cases that the schools, you know, report based on individuals or children that may have been infected while they were onsite. It does not include kids that were, may have become infected while they were at home or doing something else. This would only be for schools. So we have five total onsite active cases. We have zero clusters onsite and zero current onsite outbreaks according to our state's Couple other slides that we put in here. We want to, again, prevent the spread of infection while we are in congregate settings. Our schools, our hospitals, our nursing homes, any places where there are large numbers of people that can gather together increases the risk for exposure. And so to prevent the spread of infection, we are encouraging folks to get vaccinated for all of those that are age-eligible, 12 and up. And these are, this is a link to our state website, and it lists all the sites where people can get vaccinated. Our clinic at the Health Department at 18 Mulberry Street, we're offering vaccinations at our Tuesday and Friday clinics. And really, any of the outreach activities that we're doing in the city as well. We do ask that people call so that we can have appointments scheduled and hit that 589-4500 option too to make an appointment. We're still asking people to follow the public health guidance, staying home if they're sick, get tested, especially if there are symptoms. And if there's exposure, we're asking people to get tested after three days. Wearing a mask, face mask in indoor public settings is also still important because it reduces the spread of the respiratory droplets that can be transmitted into the air. Social distancing, safe distancing, six feet away from each other as much as we can. And then washing our hands as often, you know, as we can. You'd be surprised at how many times we touch our faces and even, you know, adjusting our mask, and that's where we can spread infectious germs as well. The other thing that we think is really important because we are in cold and flu season right now, so we want people to be mindful of getting their flu shot. And so you can get your flu shot at our clinic on Mulberry Street. We also have flu clinics that have been set up at the schools already, and so those clinics will kick off shortly. So we want to kill all the bugs that we can, crush the flu bug, get rid of the COVID virus as much as we can to stay healthy. These are just some resources. This information, I did email this to Ms. Raymond, so you do have this if you want to share this information out to the board and to anyone else that's here. But again, it just has all the resources that we use for our data, our information, and information that folks want. They can also get that by calling 211. And we want everybody to work together to be a part of this solution. Public health is not just, you know, the safety and the well-being of the public's health is not just regulated to our national, state, or local government. It's all of our role to play a part in protecting the health of the public. So we ask that people get vaccinated, that they wear their masks, maintain their social distancing, and wash their hands to be a part of the solution. Thank you. I'm not sure if there's any questions that folks have.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Bagley.
You're welcome.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I have quite a few questions again, I guess like always. I was on the site already over the weekend, and by the time we got here, it was not updated. Couple of things. I'll hold this up so the TV can see it. I took this off the state website, the colors, and I printed it in color. Probably used up all my ink. But it shows here, lower to higher, it shows light blue here, and Nashua, if you see this like little dot right here, that's Nashua because you've got to kind of hover the mouse over it. I'm getting pretty good at the state website. I'm glad you told me to go there, you know? And thank you for coming here. It's always a pleasure to have you here to update us. And I know I kind of ask a lot of questions, but if I didn't, that wouldn't be me. And so I guess I have some questions here. I did my own division here, and my numbers came out to like 0.01%. 148, that's active cases, so that's really like people who are really sick now. Am I correct with these active cases?
The active cases are cases that we're currently investigating, yes.
Yeah, investigating. And the new cases are not quite there yet. They haven't bloomed yet and being sick.
New cases would be cases that have been reported according to their test results. Those would be the new cases. So your active cases could be individuals who may have tested positive three days ago, and they're still active because it's within a 10-day period until they get past that 10 days, they're considered active cases. New cases would be all of those that are reporting new as of the date of the lab results. And so again, the data that the state has on their website is as of September 10.
So if I was to add them all together, it'd be about 381 between active and new cases in the city. And it'd still come out to about the same in the math. So basically, I did some other research today on really a lot of stuff here. I'm surprised they even got everything in the book. I covered up the faces from the city website only because I didn't want anybody to say that I put children's faces, even though it was on the city website, like some other former board members. And if you look at the way the masks are being worn, they're kind of big on the face because everything I've heard from CDC, and I do have a pamphlet here on how to wear the mask. Oh, your guide to masks, silly me, it's sitting right in front. Guide to masks. So if we say masks are so important to prevent the spread of the droplets, like I had asked you one time, if, what's the difference between the droplets to the flu, a cold, and COVID, three to six feet? You said there was really no difference. But if you look at this, if we're going to require our students to wear masks, this mask, I mean, I could stick my hand right through the mask on the sides because I guess CDC said they're supposed to be tight on the face. I could probably go around the room and look at all the board members that the masks are not tight on the face. So it's not doing anything really if it's not tight. And that's under CDC guidelines. CDC talks about, here it is, CDC, I don't want anybody to say I didn't do my homework, CDC guidelines. Children's face covered up because I don't want anybody to see it was from the website, how big they are. So obviously, they're not fitting the students. So now I was with the, you know, things just bother me, I guess, sometimes because this has been the virus that said, this is the children are the least spreaders of this whole virus. It's been with CDC since day one. We all know, yes, they can get sick like the rest of us can get sick, but they have not been super spreaders. So I went and I happened to see what other viruses are there that are super spreaders. The norovirus, you know what the norovirus is? It's a very contagious virus. They used to call it the cruise ship virus, the Norwalk virus, the virus that the kids came home, you get it from food, you get it from a whole bunch of other stuff, very contagious. It can make, people can get very sick because you dehydrate with that virus. 19 million to 21 million cases of this a year in this country. And the astonishing thing with this norovirus talks about the deaths. Children under five years and adults aged 85 are more likely to have an outpatient or emergency department visit than people of other ages. Five years of age, 1 in 110,000. But what makes it so bad is that 2 million, 270 outpatient clinic visits annually, mostly young children. These are the viruses that the kids bring home to the parents all the time and then it goes through the house. These are the viruses that you hear around December, January, maybe into February, that the teachers and the kids are dropping like flies in the classroom because everybody's vomiting and they've got the diarrhea. And then it goes, it passes from one to the other. We never cleaned the schools when this happened. We never ever sanitized the schools or did we put masks on? I remember my kids coming home with it. So I just, it causes diarrhea, vomiting, nausea, stomach pains. Other symptoms, this is fever, headache, body aches. That's like the flu and the norovirus. Then we go on to the flu. What do we have, flu complications? Fever or feeling feverish, chills, coughs, sore throat? Same thing like COVID because COVID is part of the cold virus. They never really isolated it. Funny or stuffy nose, muscles or body aches, headaches, fatigue, fatigue.
Ms. Johnson, do you have a question?
I do, because this is why I'm putting this out.
I just know that Ms. Bagley has another meeting in, what, 15 minutes?
Well, thank you, Ms. Raymond, for telling. I'll speed this up a little bit.
Thank you.
It also, with the flu, you can get pneumonia like you can with COVID-19. And it says here, kids five years and older range from 7,000 to 26,000 a year hospitalizations with the flu. So as I'm looking at all this, could you please explain if COVID-19 is not the super spreader? This is a super spreader. And again, we never cleaned the walls in the schools, we never cleaned the desks, we never had great HEPA filters. Kids and the teachers drop like fireflies, more so the children with this. This one is the one that really attacks children more than COVID-19. What am I missing with this, that we need to have the masks on? The masks should have been on all along, I guess, with everything else these kids would bring home and got sick in the schools with. So this is what's, I guess it's eating me and driving me nuts about, the fact that these are more contagious to kids than COVID. And it should be, the parent should have the option. Because we can go through studies after studies here, and you can explain, I'm sure, that I have in my book here, what masks do. The American Association of Pediatrics talks about the fact that what it does to kids, the anxiety, the depression, the mental illness that's coming with these. So how do we justify that when this is worse than what we've got with COVID-19? Thank you.
So is there a question about wearing masks during flu season as well?
Wait, please do not speak from the audience. Thank you.
I just want you to, please tell me, how do we justify wearing the mask for COVID-19 when everything I just spoke of, the COVID, the norovirus, and the regular flu is more deadly to our students than COVID-19? From what I understand, they're not even getting the masks. Do you believe that they should have the masks on to eat? I mean, you don't even have to do that in a restaurant. I mean, I'm just trying to figure this out. And since you're the expert, I only do the research, and you're the one I would ask to give me the answer to this. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And so, I mean, when they had the first flu outbreak in 1918, one of the strategies was mask use. And we saw the same thing that we're seeing today with the hesitancy with the mask back in 1918. As far as, you know, why that has not been implemented with the flu, there's more uptake and vaccine, use for flu vaccine, it wasn't determined back, and I can remember in 2009 with H1N1, when that was a novel virus, that was not one of the mitigation measures that were put in place. But if you went into a hospital setting and all throughout, you know, time even prior to COVID, mask use has always been in place to reduce the spread of respiratory viruses. Masks did come into play very importantly with COVID because of the fact of it being a novel virus. The lack of understanding of the impact of SARS-CoV-2 was really, you know, at the time when it started, didn't really know a lot of the impact of the disease. But what we did see was wearing masks as a barrier would prevent the spread of this virus. The other thing with COVID is that the long-term impacts are still, we're still seeing and learning a lot about that, the cardiovascular things that result from it, the damage to some of the major organs. You don't necessarily see that with the flu. If public health could say, you know, we should have masks on to present, prevent flu vaccine, we probably, flu influenza, that probably would be a good call. We actually saw a decrease in the number of flu cases as a result of wearing the mask. So Ms. Johnson, it's been a part of the mitigative measures for COVID, maybe not in the past for flu, but we did see that there was an unintended consequence of, a good one, of seeing a decrease in flu or influenza as a result of us wearing masks for COVID prevention.
Okay.
Can I just have one quick follow-up?
Very quick.
It's going to be very quick. I just wanted to reiterate when you said about the, what was it, the swine flu of 1918?
The Spanish flu.
Oh, Spanish flu, excuse me. I knew it began with an S. If you read it and Dr. Fauci did a whole research on it, he said that the masks were no good because people were getting pneumonia from the masks, from the bacteria in the masks. So they took the masks away at that point in time. And you can read it, Dr. Fauci did say that. I would be more than happy to bring it in next time. But Dr. Fauci said he did all the research on it, and because of the Spanish flu with the masks, they wore pneumonia, bacterial pneumonia. And that's what we don't want to give the kids any bacterial pneumonia at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's stick to questions, please, because we need to be respectful of Ms. Bagley's time. Anyone else have a question for Ms. Bagley? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
I have a couple of quick questions. Do you know how many people around the world have died from COVID?
That, I took that, I took the slide down, but it is on that presentation that I just showed. I'm sorry. Oh, let me see if I did it here.
I'm sorry, I didn't take notes.
Globally, there's been 4.6 million deaths.
4.6 million? And you said 659,000 Americans have died?
659,000.
And that's in the span of about a year and a half?
The past 18 months.
Yeah. Of all, of all the diseases that were mentioned by the previous speakers, how many killed 4.6 million people in the world? And how many killed 659,000 Americans of all those other diseases, infectious diseases that were mentioned?
Well, that information I don't have, but I can get that information and I can send that back to you, Ms. Raymond, and you can share that with the board.
That's okay. It's kind of a rhetorical question because really, I know the answer already, and that COVID has been the big killer. And that's, that's basically the answer to the question, and that masks work. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Bagley, thank you so much for your time. I did get that email that you sent me, and I forwarded it to Ms. Kinsella and Dr. McKinney and asked them to distribute it to the board so that everyone will have that tomorrow. So thank you so much for that. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Timmons, I'm sorry.
I don't have a question for Ms. Bagley, but I do have a motion.
Oh, I'm going to ask that we refrain from motions until after public comment, as we did last time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much for your time this evening, Ms. Bagley. I really appreciate you coming out and continuing to inform us.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I sincerely hope that the analysts are correct and we end up in a place where we start to plateau and then go down again. That would be fabulous.
You are so welcome. And, Mr. Guarino, I will, just so that folks can see, that COVID is just one of the diseases that we're battling with globally, nationally. So I will send some data on some other communicable diseases that we have been working with. One of the greatest things that we've had is that because of vaccine uptake for other vaccine-preventable illnesses, we have prevented a great number of deaths because people have been taking the vaccines for those.
Thank you.
But I will send some information over just so that you can see comparison-wise what we deal with in public health with infections, with outbreaks, and other things that do kill millions of Americans and people worldwide.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that you do in the Health Department. We appreciate your, your good work. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, let me give just a second. Ms. Foley, did you need the projector? No? Okay. If you wouldn't mind, Dr. McKinney putting that up, and then, it just feels like it's looming over my shoulder. Do you know how to do it, Ms. Timmons? It asks if you want to turn. It doesn't matter. I'll just go forward. Okay. Next on our agenda, I'm excited because Dr. McKinney and I have been talking about using this presentation time the way that we used to a few years ago, and that's to recognize some of the amazing work that our students and staff have been doing. And so to kick things off -- And so, to kick things off, we have Maria Foley, grade seven literacy teacher, here with Principal Matt Poska from Elm Street. And she's going to share with us some of her book that she published, titled Seventh Grade Shenanigans: A Collection of Personal Essays Written by the Students of 7/3. And I am so excited that you have done this, and that you're here to share this with us. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. It's my pleasure to hear.
It's the green light on?
There is a green light on.
Yeah.
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's slightly better, okay.
It's my pleasure to be here and present Ms. Foley to the board and to the city of Nashua. When Dr. McKinney spoke to the administrators at the end of the summer, and his team, talking about the opportunity to highlight some of the successes and some of the celebrations that occur, not only at Elm Street on a daily basis, but throughout our schools, throughout the district, it was a great honor. And the first thing that came to my mind was the work that Mary did last summer, excuse me, last school year. And I'd like to just set the stage before Ms. Foley speaks. Ms. Foley is a first-year teacher who was starting a career during a pandemic when everyone was remote. You know, as a first-year teacher, it's one of those things, you want to go in, you want to set up your classroom, you're so excited, you have that opportunity to make those connections. And Ms. Foley was working making those connections virtually online via Zoom. And then eventually, we did get into some in-person, but Ms. Foley had to remain remote throughout the course of the year. But one of the things that she did, and she did so well, she promoted, she created, an engaging learning environment and an authentic learning experience for our grade seven students. And because of her work, and because what we have here, we have over 60 published authors because of what Ms. Foley has done. And it really is a testament to the great work that she did to go above and beyond to engage her students with writing, which, as you know, at grade seven, could go either way at times. And I think what she did was a great opportunity to kind of celebrate students and celebrate what they do. So I'm going to let Ms. Foley talk, and I will kind of pass these books around, so you can kind of look while she's talking, okay? Mary?
Thank you. Well, hi, I'm Mary Foley, and I'll talk to you a little bit about why and how we were able to publish this book. So first, the reason why we were able to create something so wonderful to share with you tonight. I recall when, in my Master of Education program a few years ago, I had to read Nancy Atwell's In the Middle, which, to describe it, is the holy grail of all things related to reading, writing, and believing in our students. One of the lines that stuck with me, and really is the reason behind the creation of this publication, was writers are made, not born. My teaching philosophy after reading this text is that any student can be a reader, writer, and scholar, and that it is up to the educator to model what readers and writers do. Give students the opportunity to practice their skills, and give students the freedom to make as many literary and academic choices as possible. This project is one that would transfer academic responsibility from my hands to the hands of my kids. They made their own choices, from what they wrote about, to how they wrote it, to their titles for their creations, to what they wanted to include in their author biography at the end of the book. Every aspect of this book is theirs, and theirs alone. No longer was I their teacher in those final weeks of seventh grade last year, I was their cheer team. I believed in them, so they believed in themselves. I showed them what I could do, and they showed me what they could do. And as you can see, their success has become my success. The overall objective of this project was not for them to pass a final or the class. It was not to focus on a letter grade, or handing me a paper that only I would read. It was for them to take control of their education and become the writers and authors that I knew that they could be. I want my students to write for themselves, not for me. I want them to have their voice heard, not only by me, but by their peers, their team, and their families, through the printing of this book. In the end, these wonderful kids are now eighth graders and published authors, ready to tackle anything that may come their way, for they know they can do it, and, as demonstrated by the publishing of this book, that they did do it. Let's talk a little bit about how I was able to get this publication rolling with the kids. Before beginning this project, it was important to find a publisher that was able to publish a student's works without distributing the publication to booksellers, so there's no issue of privacy or royalties. I remember stumbling across an advertisement for Lulu Press Kids, and their kits sold to elementary school classrooms. And with a little more investigating, I discovered the original Lulu Press Inc., and how it was easy to publish and print their literary works for our kids and families. Once the publisher was selected, and after about a month of studying narrative nonfiction within literacy, and having kids investigate the elements of narratives by reading other writers' works, we were able to conduct one last writer's workshop, having kids brainstorm, develop, compose, revise, and edit their narrative, all within my classroom. And as they worked on their own individual chapters, as you can see in the book, deciding their story, the chapter's title, and contents, we were also able to collectively collaborate on deciding the overall collection's title and the actual book cover itself. After doing a couple polls, Madeline Owen's book title, Seventh Grade Shenanigans, was the most popular, as well as the current cover out of four that I designed. After the students finished their chapter and went through all the required stages of writing processes, they were able to create their own author biography, which is in the last section of the book, and designing the interior file, conducting the final proofread, force emission, and designing and aligning the covers, probably took about 50 hours OT to complete. But all in all, this required a lot of effort by both the students and I in order to create a seriously memorable artifact, demonstrating their competencies of nonfiction works, and how anyone who takes a risk, does their very best, can accomplish what they dream. And to conclude with just a few things, I'm very humbled being here tonight. I have to share my sincerest gratitude for the kids on my team last year. They are our team's shining stars, and they made teaching through a pandemic a breeze, and they have filled my heart with joy, love, and laughter. They're wonderful kids, I can't express it enough. Without tearing up, I would also like to thank my administration, my team, and my literacy P L C at Elm Street, for they have been so warm, welcoming, and innovative, providing me the support and comfort I needed, so that I can take this risk and succeed as an educator. And even though this is only my beginning, I can sincerely promise that I will continue to do this kind of work, not only for the betterment of our school district, but so that all children under my team's care can be readers, writers, leaders, and dreamers that they are destined to become. And I'll also conclude with thanking my family who are watching tonight, for they are the very reason, through their unconditional love and support, that I became a teacher in the first place. Thank you very much for your time. And if you'd like a copy of the book, I'll send an email out tonight to everyone on the board, and I'm happy to get you a copy. But whoever else you have those, you can keep them, okay?
Oh, thank you so much.
Dottie, in the microphone.
Thank you so much for all you do. This has been wonderful, and thank you, Ms. Raymond, for reinstituting this. This is what it's all about. Thank you, and thank you, Principal Poska.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight, both of you. And this is just the joy of listening to you, and how proud I am of you, and the work of these students. Thank you.
Anyone on that side? I tend to look this way. Go ahead, Ms. Giglio.
Now, as a retired school librarian, I treasure this, and I'm hoping that in your school library at Elm Street, that you do have copies of this for the students to read. Okay, great. And thank you for offering us copies. I'm going on vacation, I'm going to take this with me. Thank you.
That's wonderful. And, you know, as a parent of two middle schoolers, I have to say, I'm really awed by the work that the students have done, and your description of how many steps it took to get there. Thank you so much for helping them, especially in this incredibly challenging year, get to this result. And to be able to hold that in their hands, I can't imagine what it means to seventh graders to have that. They're going to keep it forever, and then, you know, in 20 years, their mom's going to pull it out, and it'll be wonderful. So thank you so much. Any other comments or questions from the board? No? Thank you so much for coming this evening, I really enjoyed hearing from you and seeing your book, I can't wait to read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I got distracted. All right, thank you, everybody. I'm really glad that we have brought that back. I'm looking forward to next month, too. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or remove to the consent agenda? Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I have a question.
Okay.
When I went to read the minutes, they were not posted until earlier today, and they're not a full minutes, they're just a summary. Is there a reason why, when they're usually full minutes?
Yes, our secretary, who usually does the minutes, Ms. Waters, retired last week.
Okay, so I guess, probably under the right-to-know law, we're probably in violation of it, because it's supposed to be within, a minute must be made available for public inspection within five days after the meeting?
Yep. So probably we should have gotten it closer, it was just a matter of staffing when someone retires. So hopefully, this meeting, the minutes will be completed, now that we have identified a person to do them. I'm looking at Dr. McKinney, and he is not looking at me. Do we have somebody identified to do the minutes going forward?
Yes, my office will be doing the minutes. If there's a concern regarding the minutes, please forward it to my attention, I'll address it shortly.
Okay.
I just want to follow up. I don't know, because, you know, I have to listen to the audio, not unless we hold the board meeting minutes till next minute, next meeting, till we have a chance to read the minutes, if we're going to be typing them up.
I didn't understand your question.
Well, we have the Board of Education meeting.
All right, so would you like to withdraw those minutes from the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes, I'm sorry, to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of the last board, that was 8:29, minutes that were removed by Ms. Johnson. Okay, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Can't make the motion.
Oh, you're right. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, that will remove, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have a question regarding the removal of the minutes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that including the Human Resources Committee meeting minutes as well?
I didn't interpret it to be.
No, it's just a full board meeting minutes, that's it.
Okay. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, with the exception of the 8:29 Board of Education minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's eight to zero. All right, items move, removed from the consent agenda, that would be those Board of Education minutes. Did you wish to make a motion to hold those until next meeting?
I'll make a motion to hold the minutes of the 8:30 meeting until our next board meeting in two weeks.
I second it.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of holding the last Board of Education minutes until the next meeting in two weeks, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Are there any communications outside the consent agenda? I don't see anybody? Okay, so that brings us to our first public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. Someone has it. Dr. McKinney, is that what you just grabbed?
Yeah.
Oh, it's all the... This isn't going to work. Okay. Apologies for the sliding around, it's not very dignified, but here we are. Okay. So the first person on the list is Neil Claffey. You are first up, and Renee Leas Claffey is second up. Three, I think, three. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Claffey.
We are related.
Yes.
Neil Claffey, 32 Deer Haven Drive. I'd like to thank the chair for reiterating expectations for these BOE meetings. I'd just like to be clear, or the following prohibit, if you mention these, I'm sorry I did listen. First of all, are we allowed from this podium to mock the appearance of BOE members? Secondly, are we allowed to make obscene gestures from this podium, from this microphone? And my third concern, I'm pretty sure wasn't mentioned, and that is, are we allowed to stand here presenting comments as our own, when in fact, these comments are stolen from someone else? At the BO meeting on August 9th, a speaker stood here, and this is the first thing the speaker said. Do masks reduce COVID transmission in children? Believe it or not, I could find only a single retrospective study on the question, and its results were inconclusive. The day before, in the Wall Street Journal, an opinion piece ran, and this is how it ran at the beginning, do masks reduce COVID transmission in children? Believe it or not, we could find only a single retrospective study on the question, and its results were inconclusive. Now, the speaker did change one word, the original said "we," speaker changed that to "I." I don't have time to read her entire statement on August 9th, but if you do your own research, you will find that the rest of her comments are taken verbatim from the Wall Street Journal op-ed. And not once does the speaker say that these thoughts en masse are not her own. At our most recent meeting, two weeks ago, the same speaker began with this, first sentence, "As any parent, or indeed anyone who has spent time with more than one child knows, children are different, they have different interests, strengths, and needs, and these develop at their own pace." I'm reading these quickly, because they're not my words. Here are the first two sentences from a post by the Cato Institute, a conservative lobbying organization based in Washington, DC. "As any parent, or indeed anyone who has spent time with more than one child knows, children are different, they have different interests, strengths, and needs, and they each develop at their own pace." And I don't mean to say that mockingly, I'm trying to get through this, because... And this brings me back to my first question, the third question. Is it appropriate to present someone else's words during public testimony here as their own? In addition to providing the sources for those comments, so you have them for the record, I am asking the board to prohibit plagiarism during the public comment period. It's not permitted in our schools, where I taught for 32 years, and children face serious consequences in our classrooms for doing it. We should expect more from adults, especially those who run for our Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Renee Leas Claffey, you are up, and next will be Jesse Ruttstein.
Renee Leas Claffey, 32 Deer Haven Drive. I'm a longtime resident of Nashville, my two children attended Nashville Public Schools. I have no doubt they are doing well now as young adults, due to the great teachers they had at Charlotte Avenue School, Penn and Chuck Middle School, and Nashville High North High School. I've been a casual observer over the years of Board of Education meetings, and was moved to testify once previously, when a member of this board, who is no longer on it, began questioning the integrity of a student in the system she oversaw as a board member. I was glad to see that she and her followers were not returned to this board. Since last January, though, I have been watching these meetings closely. This board, along with school boards across the country, has had to grapple with difficult and frequently changing pandemic protocol decisions. I believe this board has done an admirable job, balancing the need to provide the best learning environment possible, with the need to keep students and teachers safe. I thank you for that. Some parents have testified in recent meetings that mask-wearing should be a parent's choice. The language some of them have used, parents' language used across the country at school board meetings, leading me to wonder, are they pushing a national political agenda at the expense of Nashville's school population? After all, it seems to me that if the goal is to keep children in person, in school, and if there is a pretty easy way to help us do that, in other words, wearing masks, then shouldn't we all be supporting that? Thank you to the majority of this board for recognizing that having students and teachers mask up is most likely the best way to ensure we can keep our school doors open and students' learning in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claffey. Mr. Ruttstein, you're up. Next is Paula Barron.
My name's Jesse Ruttstein. I live at 5 Magnolia Street in Hudson. My kids go to, two of my kids go to this school, and one goes to Dr. Crisp. I'm a little nervous, never done this before. I'm a little nervous, never done this before, so I'm just going to read what I have. I'd like to start off by saying that all the parents in this room understand that every member of this Board took the job because they care about our children and their education. These parents aren't coming here to attack any of you. We're just trying to voice our frustrations with some of the decisions that you've made regarding what many of us view as unnecessary mandates. And I'm not even here to ask anybody to lift the mandate. There have been plenty of parents that have done that. I've been following these meetings, so no need to beat a dead horse. But I would like to share what happened to my son on the first day of school a week and a half ago. He's your typical 15-year-old kid. His name is Jesse, too. He wants to hang out with his friends, meet girls, and he wants to go to school and act like a normal kid. All politics or opinions aside, normal life has been taken away from our kids, and it's awful to watch. I personally am 100% against having our children wear masks in school. We all know what the CDC recommends, but the term "follow the science" means nothing if there's no scientific studies to support the decision to make them all cover their faces. So far, we haven't seen evidence. We are just being told, "do the science." I'm trying to keep this brief, sorry. My son is very bright and has a bit of a rebellious streak like his dad did when he was his age. Like many other children that are being forced to cover their faces, he is upset about it, and he didn't put his mask on the first day of school. He was approached by a teacher, we're not supposed to say names, right? Okay.
Thank you.
He was approached by, approached by a teacher at the door, and he was told, "You can put it on or you can leave." He was offered zero counseling, and no attempt was made to educate my son as to why he should put it on. Just put it on or get out. That's what he was told. Junior called me, and I spoke with this gentleman on the phone, and he told me the same thing. And now I look like a father who's encouraging his kids to break the rules at school, which is not what I've been doing my entire life. I've always, always focused on education and respect for your elders, especially teachers. But just put it on or get out was what he was told. So when I spoke with this gentleman, he told me that he was going to give my son a bus ticket if he didn't comply. And by bus ticket, he meant that he was going to give my son bus fare for the Nashua City Bus, sent Junior on his way to the bus stop right at the top there for address code violation. I want to make it very clear that I was not informed that my son was being put on a city bus. I assume bus ticket meant school bus, my bad. Apparently, this is, according to the kids, a common practice when sending kids home in Nashua North. If that's not the case, that's just what I'm being told by my children, and I have yet to be lied to from that, by them. I received a phone call shortly after from Junior's vice principal. When I asked him what my options were for my son, he said that he could either put on a mask or you can unenroll him from Nashua's school system and homeschool him. Those are his exact words, I'm quoting him. I asked if there was a virtual learning option for my child, if he did not wish to comply, and I was told, "No. They either put on the mask or they don't go to school." This is where the political piece of the puzzle is so evident. You do not comply, your right to a public education is lost. It's fascism. The very same, I'm going to skip that part.
Hey, Jesse.
I'm sorry.
We hit the three minutes.
Oh, is it three minutes?
You just want to wrap it up.
Yep, you can wrap it up. Thank you.
So that's it, that's all I get?
If you could just wrap it up quickly.
For the record, I would prefer that my children be in school where they belong, but the in-school environment has changed. What's happened as a result of these unnecessary mandates for our children are, like some people mentioned earlier, severe anxiety. My son does not want to even come to school. So what I'm saying to this Board is I think we should have an option for children who get anxiety because of what's going on, that they can learn virtually. When he was sent home for, for having a stuffy nose the other day, we was told 10 days off or get a test. He tested negative, and he was able to complete his assignments online. I want that to be an option for our children who don't want to cover their faces when they come to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go clapping. Okay, guys. Next is Paula Barron, please, and after that is Ray, I think it says Early.
Yes, I'm sorry, I put my name on the newspaper in error. So I don't, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Ray Early? I'm sorry, Ely?
That works.
All right, I apologize. And after that is Crystal King.
I'm not in favor...
Sorry, if you could say your name and your address, please, to start.
Ray Ely, 50 Ash Street. I come from New Fellowship Baptist Church.
Thank you.
And we've had at least two members die of COVID. And people generally don't take it seriously until they have it. I have a family member down south that didn't take it seriously until they had it, and then they wanted to call and talk to me. And luckily, they got over it, but they almost got intubated. So most people, it's okay, but it's serious. If you talk to people down south, it's serious. 85% of people will be fine. 90% of people will be fine. But that last 10%, they're going to be really sick. And about 1% to 2%, I don't know what the numbers are, but for some small number of people, it's going to be a very big deal.
Mr. Ely?
Yes.
The microphone isn't picking up your comments, so it's not going...
For some small number of people, it's going to be a very big deal. And she was convinced, this, this family member of mine, after she came through this, and God, I'm really thanking God that she made it through it. So it's a big deal, so, but I'm in favor of this gentleman right here who said that he wanted his child to have the option to do remote learning. I don't, I don't care how we do it, but we got to keep people apart, and we got to take it seriously. That's my comment, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Next up is Crystal King, and then after that is Lindsey Stamos.
My name is Crystal King. I live on Fairmont Street here in Nashua. First, I want to address something that was asked earlier. I actually did my research while sitting here listening. Mr. Guarino, the Spanish flu is the most deadliest pandemic in history, killing 0.64 of the population globally. Just so you know, I Googled that.
Today, today in the last, in a year and a half.
Mr. Guarino.
That's what I said.
Mr. Guarino, please do not interrupt.
I just wanted to clarify what you were saying.
No, Mr. Guarino, I don't want to have to ask you to leave. Please do not disrupt. It is her time to speak. We need to allow her her time to speak. Thank you.
Well, the truth, truth matters.
No, Mr. Guarino, no.
Wanted to say that.
No.
For the years of 1918 to 1920, which was approximately a year and a half of the Spanish flu, they instituted, instituted wearing masks quickly within...
Ray. Mr. Guarino, please do not interrupt again, or I will ask you to leave.
30 days of them instituting mask-wearing. Globally, they got rid of masks because it was causing more infectious diseases.
Ray. Apologies, Ms. King, if you could give us one moment. Mr. Guarino, if you cannot stop interrupting, you need to leave the room until she's done.
I just want people to speak the truth.
I don't care if you...
I would very much like it if he were to leave the room.
Mr. Guarino, this is her opportunity to say whatever she wants. She has the First Amendment right to comment on anything on the agenda. If you cannot stop, you need to leave. Do you understand?
Please tell me that I'm not commenting on things from the agenda, Mr. Guarino, because neither did Kat Craftley or whatever he is named.
I understand that, because when I was speaking previously, people were interrupting me, so I understand, I understand how you feel.
Okay, Mr. Guarino, I have never been to a Board of Education meeting, ever. My son has been in the Nashua School District since third grade. He is now a sophomore in high school.
Enough. Mr. Guarino, could you please step out?
Thank you.
Okay, no clapping. No clapping. Mr. Guarino, please step out until she's done. She gets her three minutes without interruption.
I, I will not interrupt her.
You've already done so, sir.
Okay, Ms. King, I apologize. We will start over.
I'm going to restart the clock.
Okay. Apologies, Ms. King.
Furthermore, he...
You can back up if you need to refresh your thoughts.
Of those cases, there was 219 million cases of the Spanish flu in the United States of America. 4.55 million deaths, just so you are aware, in those two years. And we're coming up on the two-year mark. Sorry. Now I'm going to get to what I actually wanted to say. I thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. I know it's late for some of you. I wanted to address the Board and Dr. McKinney on a few different things. I'm going to start with masks, because the other one's a little more personal, and I'm a little on edge, and emotions are going to get the best of me. I know it's been widely talked about, children can't breathe. I can't breathe was synonymous with the Civil Rights just a year ago. Why are you allowed to restrict my child or my children's airflow? But if I do it, it's abuse and neglect, and I would be charged with attempted suffocation of my child. Today, in our Nashua School District, there was at least one incident at Nashua High South. The child was left unattended and escorted outside and shown the door. This child was shown the door, literally, not the school nurse, as Ms. Raymond had suggested previous to. Thankfully, this child had a cellphone, and he was able to contact his guardian, and his guardian was able to come get him rather quickly. I do not have that luxury. My son attends Brentwood. They do not allow cellphones to be on the student's person at that time. This child that was escorted off, out of the school building, had made it through more than half of his day without wearing a mask and on the school bus. Brentwood slash Franklin Street School, as we should now call it. As of 9/7/21, there is no school psychologist, case manager, or guidance counselor for most of our at-promise students. I say at-promise because saying at-risk is negative. As of today, 9/13, students of the school are no longer allowed to bring any beverage, even if unopened. My problem with this is personal. My child attends Brentwood and has since November of 2020, when lack of a better option for in-person instruction was, it wasn't available. My son does not learn remotely. He doesn't even learn in class right now because his teachers are wearing masks. My son had a drink last week in his hand. He was actively drinking it. The principal of Brentwood took it out of his hand forcibly. I'm very confused because we say that Brentwood operates off the policies and procedures for the regular high schools. Why is it okay for a quote "normal" student to be able to bring in an unopened container and have it for his or her drinking pleasure? But my son can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. We have Lindsey Stamos, and then Sandra Maggio.
Okay. Lindsey Stamos, 9 Osgood Road. I'm beyond disgusted, but I did write something, and it kind of goes along with what we just witnessed from this Board member. We had a protest. I did want to mention something about COVID because we were talking about the numbers, and now I can't remember what it was, and I'm going to run out of time, so I'm just going to read what I wrote. You know, it's getting really political, is my issue. I don't, I don't buy the numbers that you guys are seeing. You say, "We need to, the truth and respect the truth." And yeah, we'd all love to have the truth, but we don't have that, unfortunately. So I don't believe the numbers. I don't think the numbers are significant as they are whatsoever, anyway. So if you want to go by that, I don't get that either, but... The way that, it's like there's two sets of people now. People that don't wear masks are in one group, and people that wear masks are in another group, and we hate each other. And I really don't get along with people that wear masks because they all act a certain way, and here's an example. So we had a protest, and, and not just people that wear masks. I should say the people that are hell-bent that everybody else should wear masks. But we had a protest recently before the last board meeting, and we made a Facebook page about it, right? And somebody commented on it, saying, "I'm going to share this so that basically, we can sabotage your protest." Whatever, nobody cares. They actually had people going by, flipping off our kids, holding signs saying, you know, "Let us breathe, we want to see our friends' faces," driving by screaming, swearing at our kids. And you people think you care about the kids? Okay, these people that you're like...
I'm sorry.
...going to please?
Please.
These people here, because I don't know who they were, I'm just saying, that the people that you're, that are on your side, that are cheering for you when you make these decisions, they wouldn't put you out if you were on fire and they had a bucket of water next to them, trust me. But they're going around, driving by our kids, flipping off the kids, swearing at the kids. These are little kids out there, you know, trying to make a difference, trying to stand up for themselves. That's disgusting. So that's not even what I wrote. But you know what? So this person that wrote on our Facebook page called us Nazis and white supremists. First of all, I didn't even know what a neo-Nazi was. Second of all, I don't know anything about these groups going on. I don't know anything about the Proud Boys or whatever, whatever. The fact that somebody would call people that just because they don't want their kids to wear masks and assume that everybody that doesn't want their kids to wear masks is racist and a Nazi and whatever else you want to say...
Can you please wrap it up?
...that has nothing to do with the kids. Okay, hold on. I just think that that's absolutely insane, the way that people are acting, and when it really has just to do with the kids. And, and then they're going around flipping off the kids and stuff. You know, I don't go and try to sabotage your pro-mask meetings. I don't give it the time of day. I don't give any people the time of day.
Ms. Stamos.
I don't know what you're doing.
Ms. Stamos, you're well beyond your three minutes.
Come back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Sandra Maggio, and then Raymond Newman.
Yeah, that's my kid, a little spitfire. Okay, so I wasn't even going to talk tonight. She wrote my name down, so I, the only thing I'm going to say is, I'm going to show my face here every board meeting that I can get to, and honestly, I don't want to be here. I'm exhausted. I am so tired today, but I'm coming. And earlier, I was thinking to myself, honest to God, I was like, with all this stuff going on in the world right now, I have like a million other things that I'm worrying about, like losing my job because of COVID mandate shot bullshit. Sorry, I scratched that, I didn't mean that, sorry. But anyway, things like that, that I have to worry about, I actually thought to myself, do I even want to continue this? Because this is now starting to seem, unfortunately, almost too small of a fight to deal with when I got so much more going on. Then my daughter sends me this thing that my granddaughter did at school today, and she had to fill this out, my hopes and dreams study sheet. She's in the fourth grade, so you have to fill it in. "If I could change anything about what I did last year, I would." And she wrote, "Change wearing a mask." "This year, I'm really looking forward to making new friends. I am a little worried about wearing a mask." And then she drew a picture, and I wish I could show it to you, but I can't, but it's like a little illustration, a picture of herself in this huge black mask covering half her face. My grandkids have had COVID last year. My children had COVID. My husband had COVID. I had COVID. My mother, who's 75, was living with me when both my husband and I had COVID. I don't know anyone, okay? And I'm lucky, I'm fortunate, I get it, because I know people do die. But I really think the numbers are exaggerated. I truly believe that. I think it's a bunch of fear mongering. And when you speak of like millions of people dying throughout the globe, can we look at Nashua? Can we look at New Hampshire? When that lady was doing her presentation, it's since the pandemic first started, 1,000 and, I, I don't remember the exact number, but it was like 1,000 and something in all of this state. And I check weekly on that covid19.org, I think is the name of the website, how many children have, you know, died from COVID under the age of 19? None. Listen, it's, it's a virus. It's here. It's here to stay. We have to just, kids have immunity. Let's build up the immunity, and let's take care of the sick ones, absolutely, and let's take care of the sick ones, absolutely, and give them the treatment they need. But let's let our immunities kick in, guys, because I have never been sick since last January, March, whatever it was. Don't wear a mask. I don't wear gloves. I'm not obsessed about anything. I go to all kinds of events.
Okay. Wrap.
I don't know. I just think everybody's--
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Newman.
My name is Raymond Newman, and I live at 25 Charlotte Avenue. And I'll be brief, just a comment about whether masks are effective or not, because that was mentioned here. Okay, let me get it up. How about that?
Yes, thank you. That's much better.
Okay. I just have a quick comment about masks because I didn't plan to speak tonight, so I don't have all the accurate information that I've read and whatever. So I'll just give you the thumbnail. It won't take very long. I have on an N95 mask, and this protects you from aerosols and droplets. So I get some protection from this mask. The other types of masks don't protect from aerosols because they're so small. However, when you breathe out, you don't breathe out aerosols, you breathe out droplets. And all these other kinds of masks are effective in stopping the droplets from being spread out and then the aerosol is being released. So that's how it works. My mask is less effective because I have facial hair. So there is, it doesn't protect me 95% like it's supposed to, but I like it better than nothing. So those are the differences. And so it's, I did, I-- When there was a discussion about masks up in the State House, and in one of the speeches for one of those bills, one comment I said was, at the time, there were 1,000-- In the state of New Hampshire, there had been close to 1,000 deaths. And New Hampshire has 1.5 million people. Taiwan, where they have 29 million people, where the culture there is to protect themselves from viruses like COVID. People constantly wear masks. At that point in time, compared to New Hampshire, there were nine deaths in Taiwan. Nine compared to 1,000. So the people that are telling you that masks do not offer protection are just ill-informed, I believe. I don't know. But that's what I know. Next time, I'll come back with documented facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. All right, this concludes our initial public comment period. Ms. Bishop, if you could pass the sign-up back down, then we'll have people sign up for the second comment period if they so choose. Okay, so next on our agenda is the superintendent's comments. When you're ready, Dr. McKinney.
Thank you, Madam President. Three things for this evening. Congratulations to Noah Jenkins, a Nashville High School North-- Athletic Association presented Noah this morning with the 2020 Walter Smith Award. While a student, Noah was the manager of the North baseball team. Since graduation, he's been a faithful in helping with athletic events, setting up gyms indoors, overseeing invitational events, and supporting team practice sessions each season. According to Zach Harris, the guidance counselor at North and baseball coach, after workout started, he threw on a catcher's gear and caught bullpens for two hours. For those who know baseball, this is not an easy or glorious task. Noah is a very special student, having to overcome several serious health interventions over the last years that impacted his overall health and development. According to our A.D., Lisa Jingeris, Noah's contributions to the Nashville athletic programs have been widespread and important to the daily operations of the department during the school year. As Coach Harris said this morning in the letter that Noah received letting him know that he would be a recipient of this award, it is said that Walter A. Smith was a tireless worker, true to his convictions, loyal and honest. And I cannot think of a more fitting description for Noah. With Lisa, North Athletic Coordinator Dante Lorendi, Coach Harris, and all the athletic coaches who continue to benefit from Zach's commitment to our high school teams, we're delighted to add our congratulations for a well-deserved recipient of this distinguished statewide award. Two other things that we do each year. Our school nurses are working with the City Division of Public Health and Community Services to provide school-based flu vaccine clinics. Each student and staff member is able to receive a flu vaccine at school, and public health is providing consent forms in order to receive a flu vaccine. And clinics will take place at each of our schools starting later this month and through late October. And we're grateful to our public health nurses and school nurses working together to make this possible for our students and staff again this year. And lastly, New Hampshire is vaccinating anyone over 12 years of age or older. There are more than 400 locations across the state offering the vaccine, and many locations offer walk-in service without the need for appointment. So we encourage everyone to call their healthcare provider or call 211 and learn where you can receive a COVID vaccine in Nashville. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Board response to superintendent comments. Ms. Timmons, do you have a response?
No.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
I want to thank the nurses for putting together the flu vaccine clinics. Again, having worked in public education for most of my adult life, I was always thankful that I could get the vaccine at school, and anyone can get it at their local pharmacy or by their primary care doctor. I think it's important. We had very low incidences of the flu last year. It would be nice to see that again. Thank you, school nurses.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Mr. Guarino?
Sure, I would just like to reiterate what Dr. McKinney said. If you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated because what has happened is that this pandemic has become a pandemic of the unvaccinated. And I think the sooner we get people vaccinated and everybody on board, the sooner we'll be over this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I'm going to bite my tongue. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Odin?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I appreciate the updates. And once again, congratulations to Mr. Jenkins. It's so lovely to see one of our graduates going on and making a difference. Okay, super, I'm sorry, student member of the board comments. Mr. Dunn?
Hello.
I didn't recognize you with your new haircut, so--
I know, I had to cut it all off for soccer, but it's all good.
Welcome.
Speaking of which, I just came from soccer practice. The athletics have been going very well so far. Everyone at school seemed to be very excited to be back. The transition to school is very good, from what I've heard and from what I've seen at North. And I actually traveled to South my first block, so the kids at South seem to have the same opinion that I've seen so far. What we did as for the high schools is we had freshman day on Tuesday, sophomores on Wednesday, and junior seniors on Thursday. I think that was a really good transition, especially with COVID, to really give our kids all a chance to get back in the school and get acclimated to the new environment. And I think the transition's been very well so far, and I'm looking forward to a great year.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Dunn. Okay, we don't have the Budget Committee. Finance is tomorrow. Policy is next week.
Excuse me, Madam President. We're not having a meeting tomorrow night. It's been canceled.
Okay, finances will be rescheduled?
It won't be until October now.
Okay. October. Thank you for letting me know. I was just going right through. All right, so finance is in October. Policy is next week. Curriculum is next week. Yes? Okay. HR met earlier this evening.
I'd like to suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. So Ms. Timmons makes a motion to suspend the rules to allow tonight's HR recommendations to be heard.
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Okay, I just want to write it down. So it was, the motion was made by Ms. Timmons, seconded by Ms. Gilio. All in favor of suspending the rules? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So having done that, go ahead, Ms. Timmons. Thank you for covering that this evening, Ms. Timmons.
No problem. I'd like to move to approve the personnel recommendation dated Monday, September 13, 2021. Seconded.
All right, seconded by Ms. Gilio. All right, all in favor of approving this evening's personnel recommendations? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes eight to zero. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, do we have any liaison reports this evening?
I don't.
Okay, I don't either. The JS SBC meets on-- Yeah, I don't have my calendar in front of me. Next Thursday. So here in this room. Thank you. At 7:00. Okay, unfinished business. Dr. McKinney, you have an update for us on the reopening plan and how things are going so far.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Raymond. This won't cover everything, but I wanted to speak to a couple of things, and they're also relative to our district goals. First, I want to say thank you to the Greater Nashville Mental Health. We have an MOU with them in place so that our students have a referral pathway when there's a mental health need. We've worked with them to provide a coordination clinician who can help facilitate the process and get kids who need help and support in a timely way. So very thankful to the Greater Nashville Mental Health. We also have another contract coming to CNE around additional mental health supports for our students, and we'll be talking about that next week at our meeting. This week, we started our COVID notifications. We've had two go out this past two weeks. The numbers are down from last week, so happy to see that trend continue. We'll be beginning safer-at-school screening or testing by the end of the month, so students and staff will be able to get tested on a regular basis, according to our schedule, that'll be available to everyone on a regular basis. Two other things. I just want to ask for ongoing patience and support. Transportation is doing their very best. We've had a couple of hiccups with delays. A number of their staff were on the road. Like, for example, today, there was only one person available for phone calls. So we're working on communication and notification that we have a strategy for that as well. I'll have further updates regarding that because I know there's been some feedback that it's taken longer, and, you know, some of that is within our control and some of it was without. For example, there are 100 buses on the road at any one time. Some of the things that happen on the roads, we've had broken lights, we've had medical emergencies, we've had delays in traffic. Those are beyond our control, but certainly the availability of bus drivers and training them and knowing the routes and providing communication is something we can control. So we're working with first student on that. And then lastly, staffing. We're still actively recruiting and hiring, so if you're just enjoying the district, please let us know. We are, we do have a large number of openings left. I would say like 300. But the largest two categories are after-school, so all the after-school programming that we have in athletics. And then the other part is with student support, special ed. So we're working on trying to hire for those positions as well as contract with outside agencies to fill in the gaps where we're not able to hire people. So with that, those are my reopening updates. Actually, if I could add one more thing. This past month, we had to submit to the state an SR3 financial plan. I would call it a first draft. It does require the same sort of community input and allow for stakeholder input. So we're not at the stage yet where we're putting in things for SR3. So I'll be sending up meetings to acquire more stakeholder input, but I did have some meetings with the leadership team, special education, the National Teachers Union, community partners, and so forth. So that's a first draft towards spending, which is a little bit down the road. But when the state asks for a deadline, I try to meet them. So, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I support you meeting the state's deadlines. So please let us know if there's anything we can do to assist. I just wanted to ask you a question regarding the memo that you sent us. On the memo, you have a bunch of links to resources from the state. And I'm just wondering, I know that that's on the state website. Is it also on our website? Oh, you're stuck.
I heard Jimmy laughing at me. Yes, these are all on our website, so you can go directly there. There's a long list under the COVID tab.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, questions or comments? Oh, I see hands. Okay, I'm trying to see who was first. Ms. Timmons, were you first or not?
No, I think it was Ms. Johnson.
Okay, Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Timmons?
No.
No, I don't know why I'm--
I'll let Ms. Timmons go first.
I'm trying to look in two directions.
Go right ahead.
I don't know what to say because I didn't raise my hand.
She didn't. She was just shuffling papers.
Okay.
But I misinterpreted the paper shuffling. Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Brown.
If you'd like to ask a couple of questions for me, then I'll let you do it. I've got a list of questions here, Dr. McKinney. First of all, have you gotten the exempt form done that we've talked about regarding medical and/or religious reasons for students?
As I described at the last meeting, there's a six-step process for applying for religious or medical exemptions. So I went over that process with the board president. People have questions or concerns, they can contact my office.
Okay, that's the first one. I'm just writing it down. I don't know if we, as a board, need to sit down with Dr. McKinney and everybody else after what we heard tonight regarding some of the students being sent home with nobody, with no parents being notified. If this is really true, I'm horrified because no student should ever, ever have to be sent out of school. There has to be other provisions here, especially if kids have IEPs. I don't know. I was told, and you even said, "This is going under the dress code." If this is under the dress code, then we shouldn't be sending kids home on a bus. We shouldn't be doing any of this.
Just for clarity, that was my guess, not--
Okay.
--like an order, because, you know, I'm one of nine.
Then we need to have a policy here because we're just kind of grabbing at straws. This is, you know, if you're listening to these parents and what's happened here. I mean, if my kids were in school, I'd be screaming, whether I was on the board or I wasn't on the board, to have any student sitting outside and the parents aren't being notified. And, you know, especially if you have a child that has an IEP that has a disability, that's a whole new realm here, if there's things in the IEP.
So Ms. Johnson, are you asking Dr. McKinney to follow up on those items?
Yeah, that's why I'm listing them kind of out here. And that's why I said I don't know And that's why I said, "I don't know if we need to have a meeting at the board to go over policy here." I know it would be within Ms. Bishop's committee, but, I mean, if we're not having, if we don't have a policy as to what really happens when these students come in and they can't wear that mask, for whatever reason, if there's a medical... We're behind the gate right now. Because today, as I did my homework again, Ms. Timmons should have probably taken some of my questions. Bishop Gerton, they have a policy with the masks that they're not wearing. Catholic schools, no masks right now. Like, Merrimack, they have the option to be out. And when that motion was made so hastily that night, we... I didn't vote for it. Yes, it was, because we didn't put in here about students, when they're eating, does the mask come off? I'm hearing stories that kids have to eat with the masks on.
No, that's not true.
So, well, I'm being told from some parents. So, I know what's being told to me. So, you know, if this is the case, then we need... But it might not be in some schools, but it might be in other schools.
Right. Well, let's let Dr. McKinney respond before the list gets so long that something is missed.
Okay.
So, and also, it looks like Mr. Dunn had his hand raised too to have an answer.
And before Dr. McKinney responds, I just want to know if the masks are on the kids outside of recess also, because we never clarified things. It was just masks.
No, it was masks indoors. It was very clear, indoors only.
But I'm just making sure of this, because things, people, I heard that people were confused.
Dr. McKinney, would you prefer to have Mr. Dunn go first or you go first? I saw your hand up. I saw his hand very high, so...
Oh, well, if that's the standard, then he should go first.
Right.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that I do not wear my mask when I eat food. And at Nashua North, we take our masks, we wear them on our chin, and we take them off, and we eat food at lunch. And we are within, you know, we space out as much as we can, but we sit at the lunch table just like we would any other time without a pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, Mr. Kenny, Dr. McKinney, a low hand can go second now.
You know, we've been in school maybe 10 days now, so we're transitioning back. So, you know, I'm aware of 10,000 students coming back and over 1,000 staff members and maybe a handful of incidents. I sincerely apologize for the way those incidents were handled. I don't like hearing about it at a board meeting, and I will look into it. But everything you're asking, Ms. Johnson, I've worked in conjunction with the board attorney, and we've outlined a process. So, everything we're doing is in compliance with his, you know, consult and advice. So, if there are other concerns relative to that process, you can direct them to the administration in a timely manner. And as I previously told you in the email, masks are not required outside at recess. The motion states students and staff will wear a mask indoors and on buses. Now, could there have been times when teachers made a mistake? Absolutely. They're busy, they're getting back to a routine, you know. And I don't think it's of mal-intent. But if these other scenarios that I'm hearing about, yeah, I'm not okay with that. I don't think we should be treating kids that way, so I'll look into it.
Thank you. I'm not saying it was intentional. I'm just asking the questions because it was brought to my attention. And if I don't ask these questions, then I'm not doing my job right as a school board member, so...
Ms. Johnson, can I speak to your policy question?
Sure.
I think back in January when we met with the NHSBA, they told us that it's probably best to not make policies specific to COVID regulations.
Remember, yes.
But we can... I'll take your question and bring it to Mr. Parker and chat about it. But I think that's something that we can talk about.
Perhaps protocols versus policies.
Right.
Yeah. Whatever it has to be, because we have to have something in writing so everybody can follow the protocol, because people get confused, things happen. And, you know, we just have to make sure we're standardized in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. McKinney, did you have one other thing?
Two other things, if that's okay. One, if you would like the administration to present a procedure for when these scenarios come up, I'm happy to do that and present it to the board. I don't think individual members, you know, the board as a whole makes policy. I don't think individual members outline procedure. So, I can work with the admin team and bring forth a procedure. So, it's clear to everybody what happens and what the consequences will be. And with that, I forgot my second thing, so I'll come back to it later.
I'm sorry, I'm just writing that down. I think that would be helpful, because I think that we have been trying our best to answer questions, but I think a procedure would be helpful. Ms. Johnson, did you have any other further questions? I apologize. We kind of interrupted your list because I didn't want anything to get lost on your list.
No, not really. I think with Dr. McKinney coming back to us, I think that's going to help us all understand, everybody in the district, what the policy and procedures are. I understand that things would change very quickly right before the opening of school. That's why I have in hand, I know Dr. McKinney must be in contact, like with Merrimack School District, where they have the opt-out, and probably the Manchester Catholic Diocese, where they have the policy. And it's working very well without the masks. So, you know, I'm hoping that we're going to change things and maybe have that option here, especially where we have our students that have panic attacks and cannot wear masks. It's not, it's not right. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown, I had you next.
Thank you. So, I actually was going to speak about something else, or ask about something else, but I will agree that I think that having a procedure in time for our next meeting to check a look at would be very important, so we know what to expect. And also, some transparency about the multi-step process that people need to get to for whatever needs they need to get their exemption forms qualified. I think that would be helpful if that was available on the website or even if you spoke about it in a meeting at the presentation. I'd really appreciate that, because I don't really understand the process myself. So, actually, what I was really wanting to ask about specifically is transportation. So, I know we've had a lot of late buses. I'm actually very, this is the first time I've been directly impacted about it. I know that the Elm Street sports buses have been late every single day of school so far. They've actually not had buses show up and gone to the point. And then, so I thought, well, you know, getting back to school, we'll give it a little break. Apparently, it's an ongoing problem, every sport, every season, and especially since those kids don't have sports fields, on access to sports fields. They're missing out on opportunities to travel to those spaces, and it's impacting. But apparently, that's been going on not just this year, but four years. And I don't know, this is kind of a sidebar, maybe Mr. Dunn can agree with this. There's even a joke at the high school, they put it in their Saturday Night Live performance a couple of years ago about the transfer of buses at the end of the day. There's always a crazy thing. So, given that information, I was wondering if we could send the transportation contract for review to the Operations, Finance and Operations Committee to talk about what kind of a process we're going to use from a district to make sure we're documenting those late times. And then, secondarily, if we need to start enforcing the penalties that are written into the contract. Thank you.
Yes, you can answer. You don't have to look for me.
I would guess I would ask the board to keep in mind three things. One, we definitely need bus drivers and First Student to get our kids to and from school. Two, included in the contract is our First Student app, which I think will be helpful in parents knowing where the buses are and know the delays and be on top of the bus route. So, I think that's going to be a great communication tool that we're going to have available across the district by the end of the month. And then, the third thing, you know, I would just, again, we're in transition. Two high-ranking people in dispatch at First Student have suffered family losses and have been in and out of the office, and I do believe that's an impact to communication right now. So, I don't see that as a long-term situation, but I would just ask for some leniency to the end of the month. And then, maybe if you wanted to in that October meeting, have it come to Finance and Ops. But I think this is just a challenging time that's unfortunately happening right when we go back to school. Thank you.
Yes, I would, I would actually like that. I'd like to request an update at Finance and Ops in October.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Donovan is writing that down. And also, Ms. Johnson, who is the chair of that committee, so fantastic. I don't think we needed to go anywhere else, right? You've got it? Yep. Okay, fantastic. Any other... I'm sorry. Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I would just like to go up, Ms. Brown, and saying that we have had, at times, for 4th Block, we usually get announcements and sometimes that the buses will be like, for say, I think today it was like Bus 453 will be on Bus like 451. So, there are times where buses merge, but from what I've known as a whole, you know, we've made SNL jokes or stuff like that. But I think that kids always have a bus home. It's just a matter of sometimes those switch, and with COVID, I think that's accentuated the shortage of bus drivers we have and things like that. But we, they do a very good job of announcing that and making sure that everyone knows where they're going and how they're getting home.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
I remember the other thing. Well, before I forget, in regards to transportation, we are working with city's risk management, because last year during COVID, students were allowed to drive to other CT centers because busing wasn't available. So, we're working with them to develop a process where kids could drive to and from the sites, thus not having to be on the buses or be late for after-school activities. So, I had a meeting today with the Hudson Superintendent, and we're working on that process and hope to have that finalized within the next week or so. The other piece I wanted to speak to was, I was at a statewide meeting on Friday, and the commissioner spoke and gave an update from the State Board of Education. And it's just an interesting time in that schools must provide access to full-day in-person learning. But distance learning may be offered, but it's not required. He walked through a scenario where if we were to get to a place where there was a cluster or an outbreak in a classroom, say there were 20 kids in the class and 10 kids are out, we would need to get consent from the other 10 parents in that room for that room to flip to be remote. So, I understand the concerns around offering other options for kids. We are working on that, at the same time, trying to balance keeping in-person instruction, being fully staffed, and not draining our teachers by having to go back and do hybrid instruction again. So, it's not an easy solution. We're not trying to deny anything to anyone, but it's just, just more state of affairs in terms of these are the requirements that we're working with, and we have to kind of stand up another option.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I'm just taking notes on that. I wasn't aware that the other, if there's a cluster, then in order for the classroom to have remote, the other parents would have to consent for that as well.
Yes, all the superintendents were not aware of that as well, nor were they less than excited about it.
Okay. And then, what about... So, what do we do if we have a cluster or, you know, I mean, do those kids... What structures do we have in place to make sure those children don't miss out on learning?
So, I'd rather not speak about it now. If I could speak about it at the next board meeting, we have an all-admin meeting coming up that I'd like to speak with the principals, and then I'd also like to speak to the teachers' union. But right now, per the reopening plan, we're back to, you know, operations before the pandemic. So, we provide work, we provide support, but there's not the expectation of live synchronous instruction while kids are out.
It reminds me of, you know, when kids got mono or, you know, broke their leg or something when I was in high school. You get your work for the 10 days or a month, and then you...
So, we are looking into like virtual tutoring and other tutoring supports that may be available within the 10-day window and beyond. So, we just need more time to investigate those options.
Okay. I'll look forward to that on the next agenda. It sounds like a big agenda. Okay. Anyone else have questions about this update or anything having to do with returning to school? No? Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I look forward to continuing to develop this over time. And I just want to say thank you to administration and staff who are, and the families and the children who are kind of learning with us as we go. It's been exhausting, but I appreciate everyone sticking with it. Okay, so now we're on to new business. And I'm really excited that Ms. Davies, the grant writer we share with the city, has gotten us another grant. So, yay. So, we have a memo in our packets from Ms. Davies regarding a $46,000 grant from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's David M. Brooks Fund. Did you wish to speak about it, Dr. McKinney? Or do you want me just to read it?
Oh, you're doing great. Thank you.
Okay, great. "The fund is intended to strengthen and encourage student participation in the schools, in the school district's music program. It's the second year in a row we have received this award." Oh, that's awesome. "Our music department coordinator, Tom Souza, was instrumental in planning for the use of this funding, building on the expansion of the music program made possible by the previous year's award from the David M. Brooks Fund. In 2021, we purchased instruments and equipment to meet the needs of the middle and elementary schools. This year, the fund will enable us to purchase new and previously scarce instruments for the high schools in order to provide more opportunities for students. The grant award may only be used for the purposes specified and the budget approved by the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation and requires no matching funds." Oh, that's wonderful. So, "I recommend acceptance of the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's David M. Brooks Fund grant in the amount of $46,800."
Second. She cannot make the motion.
Point of order, that was, that's a rule that the president can't make motion?
It is not. However...
I did find it. I'll make the motion.
We have never followed, we've never, that's always been our practice, that the president can, in fact, make a motion, because we're a small board. However, I'm perfectly happy to let Ms. Giglio make the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Bishop.
Could you read the motion, please?
It's not something that I want to fight about.
And the acceptance of the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation.
I'll read it. The motion is, "Acceptance of the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's David M. Brooks Fund grant in the amount of $46,800." Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. And I just, we should have had Mr. Souza here so that we could thank him for all the work he's been doing. I think it's absolutely fantastic that we were able to expand our music program during a pandemic and that we're going to do it again. That's wonderful. And a big thank you to Mr. Souza. Anyone else have any comments or questions on this motion? Oh, Ms. Giglio?
I'm sorry. I want to thank Ms. Davies and Mr. Souza. And as a parent of someone who was the class of '99 from Nashua High, who got an excellent music education all the way through and is now teaching music in New York City, I want to applaud everyone involved with the music program. I think it's wonderful, and this is a great, great addition. Thank you.
Yes, this is excellent. Go ahead, Mr. Corino.
I just want to remind people that Mr. Souza puts on the holiday concert every year, and it's fantastic if you haven't seen it. So, I would recommend that people take that up during Christmas time, during the holiday season. It's a great concert for our kids.
All right. Hopefully, the numbers will have gone down enough to make it safe. All right. All in favor of accepting the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's David M. Brooks Fund grant in the amount of $46,800? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Wonderful. All right. Does anybody have any other new business? Ms. Timmons?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move that everyone, including board members, wear a mask at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks.
Second.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I've got it correct. You move that everyone, including board members...
Wear a mask at all board meetings until COVID numbers indicate when it is safe to stop wearing masks. It's been second.
Okay. Hold on one second. I see your hand. Can I see there? Okay. Did you wish to speak to your motion, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, on the contrary of what people think. The pandemic is real. I have family members die from the pandemic. I have members that now have COVID. I know masks work. I have a close friend right now is being incubated because of COVID. So, those who don't have family members or don't know anybody that died, they're very lucky. On the contrary, I do know part of few. So, I think it's safe to wear masks. That's the first line of defense, and that's why I made that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Giglio, did you have anything to say on the motion?
No, but I fully support it. I think that when we're in crowded meetings, we should all be masked. And this is a crowd. Tonight, we have fewer people than normal, but sometimes we're filled to capacity. And I think it's important that we adhere to the masks as long as the pandemic is at the level it's at right now.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I saw your hand.
Thank you.
And then, Ms. Brown.
I'm going to go back into Executive Order 74. That doesn't exist, but I'm going to pull some stuff out of this. "Any person with a medical condition or disability that prevents them from wearing a mask or face covering. A person who declines to wear a mask or cloths face covering because of a medical developmental issue or difficulty breathing shall not be required to produce documentation or other evidence verifying the condition." So, if you want to get into trouble here, because you can't ask anybody their medical condition, you can't enforce this. Because there's people who have a disability, people have illnesses that cannot wear masks. And nobody should have to disclose any of their medical conditions to be in this room. This is a public building. It is paid for with tax dollars, and you cannot enforce this. Mandates aren't even enforceable. So, I've been reading a lot of law lately. So, this cannot be enforced, and you cannot enforce it because people who have disabilities... So, if anybody in the audience here who is sick and cannot breathe with a mask, you're going to tell them that they can't come into this building. You're going to tell them that they can't come to a public meeting that's open to the public. public, that we, the people, pay for this building without taxes. And yes, we do pay for it without taxes because it was bonded money back years ago because I sat on this board and the Board of Alderman when we built this building.
Thank you.
So I'm going, I will not support it. And if I have to, I'll contact the feds on this because there's people here that have a disability and cannot wear a mask.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Just to be clear, you said Order 74 does not exist anymore?
Executive order does not exist, but I'm pulling out what was in it that talks about disabilities that the governor put in there. So it has to be legal if they put it into this document back when because we violated this document when it should have said here, educated students and staff within K through 12s, they did not have to wear a mask. It was right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for the clarification. Ms. Brown? Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Ms. Brown next because I saw her hand before and I wrote it down and then we'll bounce back. Ms. Bishop, did you have your hand? Yes, okay. Hold on. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of things that are wrong with this. I think that Ms. Johnson's made some very good points about how the fact we still both legally and ethically can't ask people for on-spot exemptions, medical exemptions. I think this is an overreach for the public or in a public meeting as a governing body for a school board as opposed to someone, this isn't qualify as an ordinance. It doesn't qualify as a law by any means. And by adopting this, we're really pushing the boundaries of what this board is supposed to be meant for. I'm actually going to repeat Ms. Bishop's wise words. We were recommended not to adopt policy either temporary or long-term way back from the NHSBA on pandemic-related procedures. I mean, so it's inconsistent with that kind of emotion. And I think there's also a giant loophole in this or another, I think the problem that's irritating people that I'm sitting here without a mask on is that when the motion to mask all the teachers and students was made, it left a loophole for individuals who choose not to from the audience or who walk in off the street. I think it was hasty and it should have been something that if we're going to do something like this, it needs to go through the policy committee and be up for discussion. Additionally, the language is very ambiguous and doesn't include any end time. It doesn't include any metric. It doesn't include any data that's measurable. It is entirely an emotion-based argument. Therefore, if you wanted to, or I mean, it depends on who you ask, if this was to be even a consideration, I would suggest that we move to also adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney at the same time. So I would move to amend the motion to adopt the matrix presented by Dr. McKinney on, I think it was July, was it August 12th? I don't remember the exact date. It was the matrix in the original, that's what I was actually looking for through the stacks of paper. I apologize for not having the date prepared. The matrix presented by the Central Office for Mask Wearing.
As part of the original return to school plan?
Yes, as a part of the original return to school plan.
Point of order, I'd like to pull the question and vote on it.
Wait, Ms. Brown has just made a motion to amend. Does she have a second for her motion to amend?
Can you, sorry, can you repeat that? I just need to write it down.
Ms. Johnson seconded it.
I move to adopt the matrix presented in the original return to school plan by Dr. McKinney and I'd really love to hear Dr. McKinney's perspective on that.
So that was by Jessica, I'm sorry, by Ms. Brown and seconded by Ms. Johnson. So if you were to call the question now, it would be on the amendment, not the original motion?
Yes, I want to call a question on the amendment.
Okay. All right. On the motion to.
Roll call.
Okay.
And we can't ask questions?
No. But what happens, and I'll just explain it because we don't do this very often, what happens when you call the question is that you vote on whether or not we're going to vote right now. So the first vote, yes, means no more discussion, we're moving directly to voting on the motion. No means I would like to continue this discussion, I'm not ready to vote on the motion yet. Does that, does everyone understand that?
Yeah.
So yes means no more discussion, we will vote on the amendment. No means allow for more discussion, wait until we've had that discussion to vote. Okay? It always seems the opposite of what it should be to me. So go ahead, Ms. Bishop, on roll call as requested by Ms. Johnson.
So I'm calling the vote. I say no. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Um, no.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. So it did not pass or the noes got it, however, we. So by my count, that was four to three. Four not, four not calling the question. Five.
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 Three.
See, that's why it's important that I say math out loud. Okay. So I think Ms. Brown had pretty much spoken on her motion. So, but Ms. Brown had asked if Dr. McKinney had wanted to share anything regarding her amendment regarding going back and adopting the matrix. Actually, I have a question about that. Is your amendment for only this motion that we would adopt the matrix or adopt the matrix completely for the entire district? For the district?
Point of order?
Is that possible?
No, because, because she, an amendment is to her motion. Her motion was only to.
Only to the board.
To that question, to the board today. It wasn't, wasn't district by it, it was just a question.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
You're welcome.
Apologies, Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. I didn't come prepared to speak to the decision-making matrix that was provided back on, I believe it was August 9th. This was a document that was prepared by other superintendents as a means to help facilitate the decision to wear masks indoors and outdoors. This version that was presented was based on transmission levels. There was another subsequent one that also included vaccination status. This was also at a time when there was not a decision-making matrix provided by the state. So that is a document that's available as well. So if you're looking for all three, I would suggest you, you know, put that on an agenda item and present all three to the board for discussion.
Are those other two, the ones to the state, on those links that you provided in your memo?
I don't believe the state one is, nor the superintendent ones, but I can provide that to the board at the next meeting. I'm looking at the state website now for the, their latest edition of their mass decision-making matrix.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Oden on the amendment? Because Ms. Bishop had wanted to speak before.
I know the motion was made, but I haven't had a chance to speak and I thought within the rules that before you call a motion, every member had a chance to speak. No?
No, not necessarily. Having said that, I have Ms. Bishop who wanted to speak to the original motion. Would you like to speak to the original motion too?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I wanted to ask, in addition to the concerns about people being able to not wear masks because of religious or medical exemptions, we also have people who don't feel that they're able to come into the meetings because of the mask variances, so people not coming in.
Right.
I would be wondering if, because we do have to make this accessible to every member of the public who wants to come, if there's a way that we can come up with an ADA appropriate way to allow people into the building, not into the building, into the meeting to participate and to do public comment, whether it be virtually or coming up with a way inside of the building to allow people to be socially distanced without calling for vaccination status, medical exemptions, religious exemptions. I feel like this is probably something that we need to talk more about with administration and probably with building maintenance, I'm assuming, before we would be able to come up with an answer.
Hold on, Ms. Johnson. Dr. McKinney?
So you're looking for an option to make people available to have public comment who cannot or are unable to attend the meeting?
Yeah. Because of their medical condition preventing them from coming.
We're going to allow people to be in here without masks. They're unsafe, so we have to make a safe option for them, just like we're making it safe for people to not wear masks.
I understand. I think the two options to take back and further discuss with ETV and Ms. Cuccella would be presenting those comments in writing or allowing for a call-in number to present those comments during public comment.
Right. Do we think we would be able to come up with a plan to accommodate for that if we've decided to adopt the matrix in regards to masks, which would open up less mask-wearing in the future? How fast do you think we could get this done? I just don't want to vote on something tonight hoping that we have a plan and then being told we don't have a plan and we've already made this motion.
Fortunately, I can give you a timeline. I would need to bring it back to ETV and Ms. Cuccella in terms of logistics. So could I have it for the next meeting? Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be a lot to do before the next meeting.
Yes. I agree. We are having, we're overwhelming that agenda.
And I also, sorry, I also feel like in regards to a lot of this, we are, how many days into the school year? 10? 10 days into the school year, we're still ironing things out. We're still trying to figure out, you know, where the kinks in our armor are. I feel like with a little bit more time under our belt, we're probably going to know more about what we need to shore up and what's going well and what we can continue to do well. I think Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown have stated many times that they feel that the motions have been made too hastily. I feel like we're in a good position right now to be able to take a beat and take a look at what's been going well in the schools and adopt, adopt the measures that are going well into a more consistent process, like you guys were talking about, not a policy, but a procedure. But I feel like kind of going on the heels of what you guys are saying in regards to the hastiness of things is let's let administration figure out what is going well before we ask them to change again. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Oden was next.
Okay. Thank you. What, what has bothered me, we got an email from a parent this week that cannot come to board meetings because they're compromised. And we have to consider, we have to consider those people. So I think at this point with what Ms. Bishop has said and looking for it, that maybe this should be tabled and give it a little bit more time, but we have to consider those people that would like to come who cannot come because not everybody's wearing a mask. So I think that would be best to give it a little time.
Right. And I believe we do have a legal obligation to make these public meetings accessible to everybody.
We do.
Without asking what their medical reasons are.
Wait, we have a, not a policy, but we've had a historical process of allowing everyone to speak before people have a second comments. So Mr. Guarino, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I guess I don't really have anything new to add except that there are, there are people in the city of Nashua who are taxpayers, who are not able to exercise their constitutional rights to come here because other people don't wear masks. So we have to think about them too. And I think, I think that, I want to thank Ms. Bishop for pointing that out and also, also Ms. Oden. So we have to take into account the rights of everyone, not just people who are seen all the time or vocal. And there's a lot of people that would like to come here and contribute who can't because people just won't wear masks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, Ms. Gilio. So I, I just have a couple of thoughts on that. And one of it is that Dr. McKinney and I would like to continue to have recognitions at the beginning of our meetings once a month. And I'm concerned about children who aren't able to be vaccinated yet coming to a place, especially if it's packed, where there isn't mask-wearing because our, you know, we don't then protect our youngest and are more vulnerable. So that's my thought on this. And then I'll, everyone wants to have a second thing, so we'll just go. Ms. Timmons?
Okay, thank you. I'm not smoking, speaking out of emotion, I'm speaking out of facts. We listened to Bobby Bagley, Ms. Bagley. We listened to the CDC. We listened to the Roslin report that, the Roslin report that comes out at WMUR. I look at all of that. I listen to parents that will not come to this board meeting because the vocal field is constantly talking about masks, masks, they don't want masks. But then the, we have over 15,000 parents that is not here, that's not speaking and not on social media, that's constantly telling me that they're not coming to a board meeting because these people do not wear masks. I'm just saying. So I have constituents, a lot of them, and they want to see masks because my constituents who voted for me want me to bring this up and that's why I am making that motion. But I will pull the question. If we will come to some consensus that we can have board members call in if they don't want to wear masks or have board members, I mean, the public call in, when I don't want to stop anybody from speaking on the same token, I think it should be fair. And right now, it's not fair. And we have, we have a board member now that's very uncomfortable with coming in here because we have some board members who won't wear masks. So it's not about emotions, it's about facts. And the fact is, we need something for everyone and not just a few.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
Just historically speaking, okay, if we look at last fall into early last winter, people were begging us to have our children and staff back in school. It was, it was what we all wanted and we worked really hard to get there. Up until last May, our board did not meet in person. We met on Zoom, okay? When we started to talk about when it would be safe for us to come back and meet in person, we talked about a lot of things, including the safety of the people in the room, how many people would be allowed to be in the room at one time and whether they would be masked or vaccinated or whatever. And that kind of fell by the wayside. We, we didn't really come up with any clear guidelines once we started meeting in person other than people are sitting every other seat in the audience. I think that we kind of dropped the ball on that. We could always go back to Zoom meetings. I mean, I felt perfectly comfortable sitting at my house and having these meetings and having you people call in. I would think that all of us should be happy that we're back in school and that we should just take it one day at a time and try to see the next few weeks, next month. So maybe we're going to have a break, the COVID virus numbers will go down and we will be able to not worry about this. But right now, I'd be happy to just sit at home and do Zoom meetings because I was, I understood when I came back into this meeting room that there were going to be safety precautions and I don't see those.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Unfortunately, it is, well, unfortunately. Unfortunately, it is, well, unfortunately or not unfortunately, it is against state law to have our meetings virtually. So that was a governor's emergency order that allowed it. So we do have to meet in person, which I think everybody prefers, frankly. So Ms. Johnson?
I just took some notes here. We can also see if we can bring the, maybe the meeting into the auditorium because that's where we swear people in, and we've had it. It's a bigger space, so we can hopefully accommodate people with disabilities, that they can stay on one side of the room and we can bring people on the other side of the room, and we can corner it off because that would be, it's big, the auditorium. So we would be able to have better options there. As far as board members not wanting to wear masks, I'm not going to go into my medical, excuse me, into my medical conditions, like the night that I was attacked here, about my medical conditions and about my employer. I'm not going to go into my work, I'm not going to go into my employer, I'm not going to. I've spoken to legal on this. If you hammer away, I can file a claim with EEOC, the district gets federal funds and it's discrimination. So we can, so none of us have to disclose any privacy on any disability, on any medical condition, on any vaccination, and I'm not going to be boxed into the corner. And I've spoken to legal on this already. So if you want to pursue this, the next option is the EEOC, and they told me that. Federal funds can be in jeopardy here. So we can stop with the members of the board, don't want to wear it. Enough is enough with this. There are solutions. I'm not sitting next to anybody on that side. I could be isolated in my own little corner, I'll be happy with that. That's it. And we don't know who in the audience here have a disability. Again, we can accommodate people, we can make our best to accommodate people, and I understand, under ADA, I'm the biggest one that understands ADA. And that's what we have to do, make reasonable, reasonable accommodations. So we can try to work it out, get the meetings into the auditorium, so people are spaced out better, and we can make those accommodations. But I am not going to be asked, fingers pointed at me, regarding disabilities and questioning whether or not, why I'm not wearing a mask. That's privacy. Privacy on masks, privacy on health, privacy on vaccinations. There is nothing out there that says we have a vaccine passport and we have to disclose anything. This is, this has now gotten out of control. We are, as a board, are pitting each other against each other because somebody doesn't wear masks or somebody has a health condition. And people in the audience wear masks and people don't wear masks. So you've got people over there that came that aren't wearing a mask and people on that side that are wearing a mask. So we're separated. Can we do a better job? Absolutely, we can do a better job. Can we do a better job of call-ins and Zooming if we have to? Absolutely. It has to be open to the public for public access and public comments. Absolutely. So why don't we take a look and see if we can move our board meetings into the auditorium? It doesn't matter, we have tables, we can spread the tables out, I can, I'll sit in the front row and do my business in the front row, I don't care. But enough is enough, we're pitting each other against each other. And then you want to know, why are your kids having problems in school? Look at us as a board. This is ridiculous. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table a question.
I'll second. Okay. All right, the motion to table is not debatable?
I have a point of order, Madam President.
Go ahead.
The, the question on the floor is the amendment. Are we taking that up first? Are we taking up, weren't we supposed to clear up the amendment first? So if she tables anything, it has to apply to the amendment?
It applies to the, I think her intention is to table the entire thing.
Yes.
However, it has to apply to the motion for the
We have to
The amendment first, and then I assume Ms. Johnson will make a motion to table the entire motion if her tabling of the amendment passes.
So we have to clear, we have to clear up the amendment first?
Yes, I understand. So does Ms. Johnson. But thank you for making it clear to everybody. So the motion
Roll call.
The motion to table affects the amendment first, and then I assume Ms. Johnson will table the whole thing, but I'm just guessing her state of mind. So roll call, please, on the motion to table the amendment.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. To the motion to table the amendment passes eight to zero. Okay. Hold on, Ms. Johnson had the floor, Ms. Brown was next. Want to be respectful of people's time.
If anybody wants to make a comment before I table it, I'll let them make the comment because other than that, we're going to be done.
Okay. Ms. Brown was still next.
I was going to make a motion, but is she going to get the floor back to make a motion to table before any motions are made?
I think that that is the respectful thing to do.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson made her intentions to table the entire motion clear. I don't think it would be polite to then kind of take the floor out from underneath her.
I yield.
But she didn't make the motion yet. She said that she was willing, if someone had a comment before she tabled it. So we're trying to play nice in the sandbox tonight. Mr. Guarino, did you have a comment before it's tabled?
Bishop had a comment.
Oh, Ms. Bishop?
I think, did you have your hand up?
I'm, I'm just, I'm hoping that we can have a solution for the next meeting that you guys can present to us. I'm sorry to be adding so much to your plate with everything.
Well, I think
But I do think it's important that we make this accessible to, and I wonder if this isn't necessarily a school issue, if it's a, if it's a city issue. I mean, this is a city meeting in regards to the school. So you would think that City Hall would need to be the ones who are creating the accommodations to allow for everyone to attend. So this may be something that you guys don't even have to do. So we probably need to look into that.
I don't know. So City Hall is accessible by, they have the technical things for Zoom after their new renovation. We do not. So, and I believe that the cost for the equipment was somewhere around $26,000 or $30,000. And so we have made the choice earlier this year not to spend that, just to accommodate that. But we also did that in the optimism that COVID would be, you know, we were on the downswing and it just seemed
I just think it's something that we need to look into because it may not be, I mean, accessibility to public meetings isn't a school issue, it's a city issue. So it should be a city expense.
Agreed. We'll see if the mayor agrees.
So we can all say whatever we want. Everyone does. Okay. That's true.
Ms. Johnson, you had a motion you wanted to make?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table the entire, I don't even remember what the original motion is.
The motion originally was to have everyone, including board members, wear masks at all BOE meetings until the COVID numbers indicate it is safe not to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it till our next meeting.
I'll second that, okay?
I want a roll call on it, too.
Yeah. Okay.
We knew that, Paula.
On the motion to table, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Seem is not here. And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Timmons, for bringing that to us for discussion. Dr. McKinney and I will chat outside of this meeting about next steps and probably with ETV as well. I'm sure Jimmy and Mr. Johnson have some thoughts. Okay. Any other new business or can we move on to public comments? Okay. Seeing no new business, I am ready for the public comment sign-up sheet, which I believe Goodness. All right, thank you, Dr. McKinney.
What time is it? It's 8:24. Okay. So the second comment period. First, I have Catherine Britton Hatch, and then Crystal King will be on deck. Oh, you're ready.
I'm ready.
Excellent. Can you
Born ready.
All right.
Except for my mask. I think we all believe that we get our information from reliable sources. My main sources include ABC News, NPR, and the CDC. From them, I've understood that the Delta vari, that the Delta virus variant is more potent and more easily contagious than past COVID-19. Also, I've learned that children are increasingly getting sick more often and more seriously, and that mask-wearing works to avoid contagion for the wearer and for the community. So shout out to the, all the district employees, and I support the Nashua District masking mandate.
Ms. King, you're on deck. Do you think you could stand that back up for me, please? Thank you.
I got you.
You got it. All right, thank you so much. So on deck is Mr. Dusset.
Hi. So we, we've talked about, you know, I mean, I've talked about, I should say, and another gentleman who is not actually here anymore, talked about kids being shown the door at school or put on a bus, like a city bus, not a school bus, right? My problem is, is that according to the 14th Amendment, because, you know, Mr. Guarino decided he wanted to bring up the Constitution, so I will. My child has the right to a free and public education, and under the Americans with Disabilities Act, is also protected to not have to provide proof that he doesn't have to wear a mask because he has an underlying medical conditioner, condition. It's actually against HIPAA to require him to get a medical exemption form, because then the school district is made aware of his medical conditions. So with that being said, my son will continue to go to school unmasked, and you guys can continue to have that on your conscience of his increasing anxiety, and that's fine. Also, thank you, Ms. Brown, for bringing up transportation. For the last 13 days, school has been in session for. The first week of school, my son was not in school because Brenton Wood/Franklin Street School had no where to go. For the second week of school, my son went to the Boys and Girls Club for class. We were not made aware of these changes until approximately four days before school started. And then the second time around was five days before school started, which is not acceptable by any means. And then the transportation that we were promised was going to happen never came in the morning, disrupting my work schedule, my parents' work schedule, and Julianne's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Dusset? And then on deck will be Christina Darling.
My name is Roger Dusset. I live at 20 Marshall Street. And Ms. Merriman, I want to apologize for my outburst on the, on the last meeting. It has come to my attention, though, who runs what in the school district. One school had a kid go to the nurse twice and was sent back to class and then was told to take the school bus home. And the kid had COVID-19. Same thing at Elm Street Junior High, another student throwing up, the teacher, the nurse, you can go back to class and walk home. Now at the high school, kid gets thrown out of the school? Really? Who is in charge of making the rules? Okay? This is not going to be, well, one person says this, while another person says that, and then, oh, well, you can't talk to him, he's too busy to do everything else. So you guys need to figure out who makes the law, who writes it down, and who enforces it, and not micromanage everybody. That's the whole problem. This whole board is micromanaged. This one wants to be in charge, that one wants to be in charge, that one wants to be in charge. Where is the boss and who is supposed to stand up to, for this? That's the problem. And now for mandates? Mandates are only issued by the governor, okay? And are only during natural disasters and state of emergencies. And last I've known, we're not in a state of emergency and we don't have a natural disaster. So telling us that we have a mask mandate for school? I don't think any of you are governors. So I mean, with that, you can figure it out from there. And then, once you figure out what the policy is going to be for kids that are sick, send an email to all the students or the parents so we know what's going on. Because that's just ridiculous on what's been going on lately in the school board. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dusset. Christina Darling, and then on deck is Alicia Houston.
I'm at 12 Marshall Street in Nashua. I hate masks. And I know I am not the only person in this room that hates these things. But do you know what I hate more? I hate that two children that live in my building are being cared for by elderly, at-risk grandparents. They are terrified their kids are going to bring COVID home, and yet they know from the last year that remote learning doesn't work for their kids. And I keep hearing this argument that it should be parents' choice, that the grandparents can somehow make their kid wear a mask, or their grandkids wear a mask. Let's rewind for a minute. Make their kids wear a mask. Do you guys make kids do anything? Because last I checked, kids are just like us, they are human beings, they make their own thoughts, their own decisions, and not always the right ones. If my son had his way, he would be a naturist all day. I have to tell him to put clothes on because it is what is expected in a healthy and safe community. We've already established no one likes masks. Does anyone think for half a second that kids are going to govern themselves, that they're going to police themselves? Who do we want to police them? Our educators? Last I checked, our educators are busy trying to teach our students. And ultimately, I'd like to encourage Paula Johnson to read up on the ADA's direct threat exemption. It states that if a disabled individual poses a direct threat to the health and safety of others, then the ADA does not require the business or place of public accommodation to allow access to the individual, because both the EEOC and CDC have labeled COVID-19 as a direct threat. And I would like to thank this board for making those hard calls. I have watched you guys over the last several weeks get hit time and time and time again by community members who just hate masks. And I want to say thank you for making the hard calls and for taking care of our community and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. Alicia Houston is up, and Lindsey Stamas is on deck.
Alicia Houston, Westwood Drive. So I'm not going to talk about masks, I know. Shock. What I wanted to talk about is the uptick in incidences within the schools of violence and bullying. I know that there is a bullying policy, but I also am aware that when you take away a child's identity. I also would like to state that under 91A, whatever it is that some people are utilizing their cell phones for, also needs to be included into the meeting record. So if that is happening during a meeting, a business meeting, then we need to take that into consideration. That's a sidebar. So additionally, our, our schools are in peril. They're not just in peril because the parents are going one against the other. They're not in peril just because one side says one thing and one side says the other. If, if we're not saying that this has some political motive behind it, any of it, it does. Period. It's a right versus left. It's a right versus left. There is no middle anymore. And I think what the confusion is happening with our kids is that they've lost the middle. They don't know what the middle is. We have students getting kicked out of schools, left outside. We have a gentleman here today who, you know, spoke eloquently about a child having to take a city bus. And we have kids that are bullying each other. Like, and I don't mean like bullying, like, oh, you know, you said this, and I said this, and, you know, nanana boo-boo, you can't catch me. I'm talking about kids almost getting thrown off stairwells. This is dangerous. So on top of all of this, you have to look at the amount of stress that these kids are under as well. They're under a lot of stress because they don't know which way to look. And it's up to us to show them that there is a middle. And the reason why parents' choice is so crucial is because we are the ones that are responsible for teaching the things that are not taught in an educational setting. And when we have teachers enforcing certain policies and certain rules and sending kids outside of schools and leaving them by themselves, I can tell you that from firsthand experience. Who's in charge? Mr. Dusset said it perfectly. Who is in charge? Because it seems like everyone, at one point or another, wants to be at the helm of all of this. And at the same time, I don't think anyone, any one of us, wants to be at the helm of all of this. But we do have parents' rights. And we have rights to protect our children. And if the masks are impacting the ability for the children to mitigate their own behaviors because they're so stressed, then we need to take that into consideration as well. And our job is to keep our children safe. And I'm not disagreeing and saying that you shouldn't have one option or the other. The problem is that there is no middle. So bring back the middle, please.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Next is Lindsey Stamos, and on deck is Reagan Lampier.
Let me state my name again.
Just state your name so that it's for the record.
Lindsey Stamos, 9 Osgood Road. I'm the one who makes decisions for my kid. Me and her father, we come together and we make the decisions for our child. We're on the ball with everything. My kid is not confused. My kid goes to Sunset Heights. She's in the fourth grade. She is the coolest, calmest, most collected, down-to-earth, but lover of life you've ever met in your life. She's not ever going to be a bully. She's not torn between this kid and that kid because it doesn't matter to her. She loves everybody. Oh, my God, she's amazing. But, you know, what I was, oh, see, I have a two-month-old baby, and I'm up with her, like, all night long, so my brain literally doesn't really work that good. But the point is, by the way, my baby's not vaccinated with all the vaccines. I got COVID when it first came out. My immune system is phenomenal. My daughter never got sick. My baby never got sick. We don't worry about these things. We wash our hands when we need to wash our hands. But like, we live our lives. And the fact that you people even are considering worrying about masks at this board meeting when most people who come here are healthy and the ones that aren't can just wear a mask is unbelievable to me. It seems like you're just worried about the people that are coming here without masks because maybe we're a threat. It's pretty obvious. I don't know what else the reason would be. You're really that afraid of getting sick, then stay home. If you're really that afraid that you're going to get sick in this room with a bunch of healthy people, just wear a mask or don't do it. But you're not going to take my freedom away, and you're not going to take my daughter's freedom away. I will end up removing her out of the school system. I have a question. Thank God I remembered. For the superintendent, do the kids have to wear masks for gym? I can't even believe that hasn't been asked yet. Do the kids have to wear masks for gym? Because my daughter wears a mask for gym, and she has severe asthma. If something happens to my child, I will sue the school district royally. Okay? So what's going on with that?
As we're nearing the end of the meeting. It depends on if they're inside or outside. If they're outside, doing an activity for gym, they wouldn't have to. If they're inside, they do. They are allowed to take breaks. And if children have a need to have some sort of exemption, you need to contact the superintendent's office so that they can make sure that that's arranged.
Yeah. The exemption thing sounds great. If you could put that on the website, on the six steps. You said there were six steps.
There are six steps. But it typically starts with a medical or, you know, professional.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, a medical exemption.
No, I mean a medical professional who could...
Oh, I have plenty of those. My daughter is signed up with, I pay out of them.
But I don't want to, but I don't want to talk about anything that would identify your daughter to the public because she deserves her privacy. So if you could contact the superintendent's office directly, they could help you without having your daughter's information known here at a public board meeting.
Yeah, I really don't want to make her public.
Yeah, so that's why I'm trying to...
But she's a phenomenal kid. So anyway, people are lucky to have her in the school system and at your school. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Reagan Lampier. And then on deck is Sandra Maggio.
Hi, my name is Reagan Lampier, and I live at 21 Spitbrook Road. And I'm here to let everybody know that this is not about politics. It's about public health. And I think it's really shameful that people insist on their rights to not wear a mask and never, ever consider that they are impeding the rights of other people to live freely. People with damaged immune system, people with cancer, people with, who've received organ donors or whatever, who have received organs, they cannot be out and about in public because you are selfish and you are careless and you do not place any importance upon their life. Your convenience comes first. And that is not the way that you should conduct yourself if you want to live in a good and just society. Thank you.
Excuse me, please don't yell out. Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Okay, excuse me. It's Ms. Sandra Maggio's turn to speak right now. And after that is Mr. Newman.
I'm really confused. If you have cancer or something that is just so detrimental, I don't know anybody that works or goes to school unless they're already in recovery. But whatever. Your shirt, peace, love, and vaccines. So next week, or next meeting, I'm going to wear my unmasked Nashua children. Is that okay? I'm not going to get thrown out.
Can we refrain from commenting on other people's appearances this evening, please?
No, but remember that we're not supposed to do that, right? I was told I couldn't wear that kind of shirt.
I don't know who would tell you what to wear at a public meeting.
I'm just saying, I just want to make sure I can wear my shirt.
You can wear whatever you want. I'm just asking that we refrain from commenting on people's appearances.
And the other thing that I wanted to ask is, I've noticed some people like to videotape with their cellphones. Is that permissible?
Yes.
It is, really. Even board members?
Yes. As long as they don't include audio in their videotapes because that violates the law.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to wrap it up because I feel like this is such a, I don't know, it is a waste of time. You know what? I don't care if you want to wear a mask. I don't care if you want to be vaccinated. I don't care what your politics are. I really don't. You keep talking about this is a health crisis. It's a virus. It's out there. People get sick. There are people that have died from it. There are people dying from it. I understand that. The children are a very low-risk group. Remember what I said the last time? I don't know if you remember. I forget how many millions and millions, like, oh, God, I wish I could remember the exact number of children in the United States. And out of all these crazy millions of kids, what is it now? Still under 500? And still none, no deaths? One under the age of 29, I believe it was, and no deaths under the age of 19. That, I'm sorry, it's not a public health threat at that point. And I just think you should make it optional. I do. I just don't understand why we can't just make it optional. You say you have rights, you want to be protected. Well, I have freedoms too. And I don't want to wear a mask when I come here. And I'm not going to. That's it. And kids shouldn't have to wear, parents should not have to send their kids in masks if they don't want to. It should be optional. I'm so done with this board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Maggio. And last is Mr. Newman.
Ray Newman, 25 Charlotte Avenue. Today, 2,000 Americans died of COVID. 690,000 Americans have died in little over a year. That's more than died, more Americans than died in World War II in four years. So the people that say COVID is just another virus like the flu are once again misinformed. I thought this meeting was very productive. Didn't have a lot of outbreaks. People were talking. You went through all your business. You got here, and things have been going fairly well. I empathize with you with the problem that you have, trying to protect people that are masked and believe that 690,000 people being dead is not a crisis. So I hope, and frankly, I'm glad that you tabled that motion. I think you need to go back, and I think you're going to do that, go back and determine what the public is entitled to as far as being here, whether they can see it on TV, whether they can comment. There was some comment about we can't do it because the governor made an emergency order, or I think another comment. You need to make sure that what you do is legal, that everybody gets the right to know things, and that you get to protect the people that believe this to be a crisis and those dead Americans. Consider that, and then figure out how to do it right. And I empathize with you because for the last year and a half, the state has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. The House of Representatives in New Hampshire has met in hockey rinks, parking lots, field houses, where 400 individuals were separated 10 feet apart. And there was a mask section. There was a section for people who had medical conditions and could not wear a mask. And then there was another section for people who just didn't want to wear a mask. And that's how it went. And so you've got a big job in front of you, but I hope you get it right. And thank you for taking... Another thing that I object to is the people that say in here is you don't care about the kids. I think every single one of you thinks about the kids. And do the right thing for the kids. So good luck with doing that, and I hope you are successful. And I appreciate everybody on this board, the ones that don't, like masks and ones that do. It's not political. It is, in my opinion, it is a medical problem and a deadly problem. But good luck, and I hope you get it right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Newman. And this concludes our second comment period. What we have left on the agenda is the board member comments. And so I will go around the room. I'll start with Ms. Timmons, and move that way.
I like to keep my number, which is number nine.
You would like me to go the other way?
I like you to go in order.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
I just want to thank, at this point, Ms. Foley and Mr. Poska for the presentation in the beginning. And I want to thank the president of the board, Ms. Raymond, for ensuring that we're seeing what they presented today. I thought it was just wonderful to have, I can't wait to go home and read this book. I thought that was spectacular, and that's why I ran for the board, for the education of our kids. But I certainly am aware that the mask issue, we have a pandemic we have to deal with. I'm glad the kids are back in school. I think most kids want to be there. I know some kids did, but with remote learning, but that was a minority. I don't think we have the resources to do remote classes at this time. I know we're still short on staff. But I want to thank all the effort that our administrators, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our nurses and our administrators have given because this has been, this has been a real difficult year. And we had high hopes that things would be more normal, and it's not. I want to thank Spencer for all his good work. And you always bring a good message. So thank you. But thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Actually, I was going to say the same thing as Ms. Oden. I'm pretty excited to read the seventh-grade shenanigans. And I'm especially excited, I'm going to give a shout-out to, there's at least five kids on here who are in my battle of the books, the team, my team for Ed Birchill. And so I'm pretty excited to read their work. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everybody who came tonight, whether we agree or disagree. You can agree to disagree, and we can all, you know, live together. Unfortunately, there's battle lines now. It's a shame. We're here for the students, and we're trying to make the best decisions we can. And that's why we keep going back and forth. And we're asking Dr. McKinney. We keep putting, piling more and more stuff on his plate, you know? But we have to do it because we have to get, if we're going to do something, we might as well do it right the first time rather than coming back and beating a dead horse again with this. I think the presentation was great tonight. And, you know, we all sit around here. We might battle it out here, but we can walk out and say, thank you for being here tonight. And I get along with everybody, you know? I respect my colleagues here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by apologizing to Ms. Raymond for not following your direction earlier. As always, you do a great job, and I hope the people of the city of Nashua take notice. I wear this mask. It's not a political statement. This is not about politics. It's about health. I wear it for two reasons, to protect myself, and I wear it to protect other people. That's it. No politics involved. It's common sense and science. And I guess tonight is a good learning opportunity. We talked about the great flu epidemic of 1918. And in 1918, my great-grandmother died from the flu epidemic. She was 33 years old, and she left four children. One of them was my grandmother. But that's history. And the reason why I bring that up is because that's history. And what's going on today in this epidemic is history also. And I'm very confident that when the history looks at what we've done on this board, that I'm on the right side of history. And history will note who contributed towards ending this pandemic and who did not. I know that I serve on this board as the only man. There are grandmothers and mothers on this board. And when they make decisions, they're making decisions based on the safety of their own grandchildren and children who are in this district and who go to school in this district. And so we have to, once again, look at everybody's rights. It's not just people's right not to wear a mask. But there's also, people have the right to come here, but they can't come here, as Ms. Bishop said earlier. I think that's a great point. Their constitutional rights are being violated because they can't participate because people just don't want to wear masks. But that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I'm going to go ahead and go so that we just flow this way instead of reserving the last spot. Couple of things. I make decisions actually based on other people's kids, not my own kids. Because sometimes I've made decisions that weren't best for my kids but were best for the community at large. And I think that's an important thing to note. Couple of things. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Nashua North girls soccer team, not to highlight them over any of the other sports. All of our sports are fantastic. All of our sports are fantastic. But the Nashua Girls, North Girls Soccer Team has been volunteering and helping out with Nashua Youth Soccer, which is the rec lead soccer here in Nashua. And the under-six would not have been able to have a season without their assistance. And so I just wanted to recognize that because that's a huge help to our community and it just talks about our scholar athletes and the service that they give. And so if anybody wants to let me know about service, I will send it to Dr. McKinney, who will then send it on to the principals and then I'll shout it out here. Two other things. One other thing. We got this library brochure in our packets this week, but I happened to be at the library today because they're having forums about their strategic plan. So if you want to have a voice on the library strategic plan, they're having online forums now. And if you go to their website, you can sign up for one. But I wanted to highlight the fact that they are now having events and workshops again. They have an anime thing for middle school and teens. They have virtual escape rooms. But then they also have things like a bicycle repair shop this Saturday, September 18th. So it's worth it to go on their website and see what they've got going on at the library again because for a while during COVID, they weren't open and having events. And I know a lot of families rely on this for activities for their kids. So I think that's the only one I have. I'm sure I will have more next time. So thank you. Go ahead, Jen.
Thank you. I see most of the people have left the audience, which is unfortunate. Wanted to highlight one of the things that Dr. McKinney stated earlier in regards to how many teachers were still looking for in the district. Sounded like several. And I think it's interesting, not interesting, I think it's important to highlight the fact that it's hard to get teachers to work these days because it is a thankless job. It's a thankless job with a lot of people breathing down your neck and not appreciating what you do. We're asking teachers to do more than educate our students, which is what they're supposed to be doing. I think Mr. Rettstein said it good, said it well earlier. Sorry about that. Said it well earlier that even if you disagree with the rules, still encourage your kids to follow them because the point of kids being in school is to get an education. And when we're asking the teachers to enforce mask mandates, we're taking away from the education of the students. So whether or not we agree with what's going on, the purpose of our kids being in school is to learn. It's not the teacher's job to police them. And I think we need to be supporting our teachers right now because there is a significant decrease in what we need. Same with nursing. I mean, there's, there are no nursing, there's no home care agencies, there's nobody willing to work with people because it's a challenging system to be in when it's more than just providing the direct service work that you want to be doing. So I would highly encourage people to apply. It is a great district. We have really great kids. We have really great parents. We have dedicated community service people who are around. We have a city that wants to see our school system succeed. Please come here. Please apply, be a sub, be a para, be a head teacher, be whatever you can be for our students. And at home, with the parents, support your kids getting the best education they can without giving the teachers an undue amount of work that they don't have to be doing during the school day. I kind of had like four different things to say all week and this was not one of them. So thank you, teachers. I appreciate you. This first, first couple of days of school has been fantastic for my household. I don't know what anybody else's household is like, but I have happy kids, I have tired kids, I have kids who are not at home. And I think that is the most important part. So come work for us.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. You actually reminded me of my last thing. So if you don't mind, Ms. Jelio. My last thing was actually about kids being in school and how important that is to everyone right now, not the least of which because we don't have the staff to do remote. But we had 13 positives our first week and those are kids who are exposed outside of school and then came into school and then had a test result that was positive. So it's really important that we keep kids home if they're exhibiting symptoms or if they've been exposed. But the plan that we have right now of having masks prevented a lot of kids from being home quarantined. And that was the thing that I wrote down and I wanted to say. 13 kids across many grades. I stopped counting how many classrooms would have been quarantined at like 40. So I really hope that we are encouraging our kids as families to follow the rules and mask up because it protects them, but it also protects their classmates from having to be quarantined as well. So instead of quarantining the one kid who tested positive, we'd have to quarantine the whole class. And I do not want to do that. I want everybody to be able to be in school for as long as possible. So that was my last thing. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Jelio. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. I have nothing additional tonight. Thank you.
Hold that, sorry. Ms. Timmons?
I have nothing to share. Well, okay. First, I'd like to say I am American, you know? Unity means a lot to me. It does. That's why I spent all those years in the military, retired. If we did what we do here in the military, we never win a war. We just wouldn't. We wouldn't even win a battle. But there's no unity. Everybody believed that their side is right instead of coming to a consensus. And the consensus is what worked for all of us, not some of us. And that's the problem. Kids love being in school. I want them in school. I have a lot of grandkids. They love going to school, but they don't mind me and the mask because that's the way they're going to stay in school. They have to wear the mask. And they have, a lot of our immune system have been compromised, not through COVID, but they have asthma, they have other, and some of the people know they have problems. And we have to mask them up. A lot of people do not come to our board meetings because we're not masked up. It's not about anybody that anti-mask. It's that it protects us, protects us all. I feel that people that don't wear masks is not protecting me. I'm trying to protect them, but they're not protecting me. And that's what we face. The kids love meeting new friends. They just love being in school. Let's keep them in school by wearing a mask. That's not a hard thing to do. It's pretty easy. It's pretty simple and it does cut down no matter what you read or what was cherry picked or whatever. It is a fact. And I will continue to make that motion that we should all be masked up. And one of the speakers did say that, you know, about ADA and EOC. It's correct. We have to protect the masses. And some things that we don't want to do, we have to do it. We have to do it to save all of us, all of us. And I have shared it with Heather, well, Ms. Raymond, that one of my grandkids had COVID this year in school, since school. And I was worried. I was scared. And I'm saying to myself, was I around this kid? I wasn't during the time that he developed COVID. So I couldn't be around this one at all because I can't take a chance of getting COVID. I survived all them years in the military just to come out to get COVID? I think not. I think that we need to protect all of us, all of us equally. That's what we did in the military. Everybody lived together. We understood each other, no matter what color, what race, what creed, what sexual orientation, we all lived together in harmony in order to defend this country. If we were split, we'll get what we got now. Not a United States of America. And that's what I want. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. All in, all in favor of adjournment? Sorry, please.
Aye.
Aye. Wow, okay. Let's try again. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are adjourned at 9:02 PM.
Somebody knows how.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.